Supervisor Moore?
Present.
Councilwoman McConner?
Present.
Councilman Isley?
Present.
Councilman Powell?
Present.
Councilman Skidmore?
Present.
All right, we're going to start the work session tonight with a presentation on the Riverside Sewer Treatment Plant Map and Plan. Janice is here with me, our town planner, to introduce everyone. Why don't you come on up to her?
Um, yes, so good morning, all of you.
Good morning.
Thanks for having us this morning, joined by our comptroller.
Good morning, please.
Sit, sit, sit.
We can get more chairs.
Let's grab them. Right in that room, Karen. To make sure everyone's here.
Yeah.
I meant that as a compliment.
Thank you.
Put this on the DVD screen so people can see it.
Even when I try to speak at all.
It's a good quality.
Good call.
Janice, is this something like, Janice?
Thank you very much.
Is this something that can go up on the screen so people can see it?
Uh, at the moment, I don't have that available. It's Kevin today, right?
It's on the website.
It is on the website. The link to the website.
Go in there and just see what this is.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good morning. I'm sorry about that. So...
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Janice Shearer, Town Planning and Development Administrator, Kathleen Murray.
Good morning.
W D Town Attorney. We have Carrie O'Farrell, Partner at Nelson Pope and Voorhees. Tom Lumbo, Partner at Nelson Pope, right?
Yes.
Our comptroller, who you know, and our former comptroller and consultant, Len Markasey. So thank you all for... So we, as you know, have been working toward a revitalization of the Riverside area. And so you have a map here, a purple and yellow map, showing the area of Riverside. And what we want to talk about today is how would we... The revitalization, so in 2015, just a little background. The Town Board at that time did a SECR analysis, a theoretical development program, and came up with zoning for this Riverside area, an overlay district. And that zoning, we call the ROD, Riverside Overlay Districts. And they have different numbers, R-01, R-02, R-03, and that's this map. I don't know if you have that on yet. So these zoning districts characterize sort of levels of density, if you will. And... But you cannot avail yourself to this zoning unless and until the sewer is in place. So we've been working for several years on putting it in place, right, and getting it there. Where's there? There is now within the Enterprise Zone Industrial Park. It's in the light industrial zone. You see this sort of oval shape in this blue area, and it says STP facility. It took us many years to acquire the properties and accumulate what we need in order to place the facility in this location. And that's the subject of what we started in the SECR again, it's called the Supplemental SECR Analysis. And that hearing started in last year, late last year. It will be on the agenda again. It was adjourned Tuesday. So you'll be hearing more public comments on this. You may be seeing public information coming in through the Clerk's office on this. And we filed this supplemental environmental impact statement because we didn't know exactly where we were going to put the sewer at that time. The other step, there's a parallel thing going on here. You can't just put a sewer, you know, a sewage treatment.
Wait a minute, so the supplemental got filed, you know, the original, so under both documents, you weren't sure where it was going to be placed? Or the supplemental is because now you know it's going to be in Enterprise Zone?
Exactly. The supplemental is now, we're putting it here. And this is the infrastructure required in order to do it. So let's look at the impacts of that specific action.
And was that adopted by the prior board, the SECR?
No, it's just, we're in the draft.
Oh, it's not done yet?
It's not done. It just began. So we're in the beginning.
We declared lead agency.
Really quick, on the SECR front, so originally, when the overlay district was prepared, there was a generic D I S that was, as Janice said, that was prepared. It identified a number of future actions in order to implement the zoning once it was adopted. Key was, as we said, sewage treatment. There were some options that were considered, you know, generally as part of that 2015 effort, but you needed to dig into it and really understand what you needed, what property was available. So the supplement is addressing, okay, this is the location of a sewage treatment plant that makes the most sense based on, you know, the work that's been done. And Tom can, you know, walk into that. And we also looked at alternative locations. So the supplement is focused entirely on, this is the sewage treatment, you know, process that needs to be implemented in order to advance, you know, anything further.
The hearing on Tuesday night is for the siting. Is that SECR?
Yes.
Hearing? Mm-hmm. So the... Right. So we tried to, um, the next, so just to continue on, the hearing is still ongoing. That record is open. So the draft environmental impact statement, for anyone who's not, you know, familiar with it, we coordinate with every agency that will have anything to say or do with it. So the Health Department, the state, you know, the Pine Barrens Commission, the Planning Board, anybody who will have anything to say about this, we coordinated with. They said, the Town Board, you are lead agency. So they're bound by your decision, but any decisions they make, they have to adopt their own findings related to it.
Janice, and this is as per our resolution in April of 2023, to put this Town Board to coordinate as lead agency for the SECR?
Yep. And so, and then you assume lead agency, and then we went on to require the draft prepared, which is what Carrie and her team did. Then we have a draft, this document, which is being vetted now. So, you know, we'll get you all a copy if you don't have one in your offices, the new members who...
That's the supplemental?
This is the supplemental environmental impact statement.
And you could do that without having a map and plan already in place?
Well, so I'm getting to that point. Yes, you can, because this is all about the actual siting of the facility. This talks about where you're going to put it and the environmental impacts of that.
Before you can make a decision on...
But included in this...
How do you make a decision on that if you don't know the size of it?
We do know the size of it. We have an engineering report approved by E F C. That's part of this whole record. We do have an engineering report on this plan. In a parallel track is the map and plan report. How much does it cost? How does this, you know, who's going to pay for it? How does it cost? That's absolutely a consideration in all of this. We left the SECR record open while we're formulating that map and plan report, which is Tom's side of the equation. And that, and Len, and we've included Dorothy, because this is all coming down to like how are we going to pay for it? The grants that we're going to get, how you put it on a balance sheet, and then they'll talk about all that. So really, now that SECR record is open, we're seeking to talk about now this, the forming of the district, which is a taxing district, which Kathleen will get into, how that all works. The map and plan report is the financial side of forming a taxation district, a taxing district. And that will be part of that SECR record.
That goes back...
Comments on this map and plan will be responded to in the SECR, is really what I'm trying to say. It's not, it's not, this is separate from that. They're going to join, they're not really parallel. They're going to come together.
So the tax map also goes, involves the R-01, two, three?
Yes, this district will see is the same.
Can you just maybe explain what this all is for the people who are listening and why not?
The overlay.
The overlay of R-01, R-02, three, and four? Just away?
Yes. The code, that is related to a zoning code that was enacted. So it's in our zoning book. And the thing about it is that no one can come in and go, oh, I want to build this building under R-01, like tomorrow, because the zoning code first and foremost says, none of this is available unless there's a sewer in place. So you can't avail yourself to this code. But what the code means is that it had like a progressive sort of higher densities, then stepping down to lower as it got near residential and fanned out toward Flanders and one of South on 104. That was the idea. What the design of that looks like, I think we can look at. And we have some time, because we're going to be, we're still going to be doing engineering work.
So that code is not set in stone, this board can...
The code is in the book, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't do some design work and see what that code's going to get you and make sure you're happy with it. And I think that's important. I really do. So everybody sees it.
Make sure it fits the neighborhood.
Yeah, there is this rap action plan, which has all the, you know, like what everybody voted on, what they wanted. It explains all the districts, the ensuing like kind of development we wanted to see. So it's very, very specific.
And that was developed with community?
This is on our website.
That was developed with community input?
Community input, support.
How long did it take, Janice? Roughly? I remember it as like a two-year process, you know?
Easily.
I mean, it was, it was, and our town attorney was one of the council people at the time. You helped, you know, you worked on this. I believe you were the liaison to this area. So we had significant community input and support for this overlay.
Yep, there's all pictures in this rap of people, and what they did was put like dots on postboards that said like, here's crime, here's problems, how we want to connect streets and have more interconnectivity throughout having an architectural appeal that is unique to Riverside. They didn't want to be somewhere else or some, you know, no offense, but they didn't want to look just like Riverhead. They want to be Riverside. And that was part of that. Then what came out of that was talking about how Riverside, it's adjacent to the river, but there's no connection or, you can't really see the river. So that led into doing the Maritime Park. So the sea is all like kind of connected. So on the north side of 24, we preserved this board and previous board. Some members are on this board, and previous boards preserved a lot of property on the north side. And then the idea is to kind of balance out the additional density with the existing homes. This is the iconic estuary. I naturally recognize the estuary. We're trying to like kind of offset and balance like the inputs of nitrogen today. It would, with the added density, with the sewage treatment, you're actually less impactful than today. So that was the idea. So you could revitalize the area, add some, add some density, because the community said, we're willing to accept some amount of density here in, because we need to revitalize our area. And it's the most economically disadvantaged community in all of Suffolk County, by the way. So, um...
Thanks for the background.
Yeah, I hope we're not jumping around too much, but this, this is an important document. And if you don't have it, I'll have it printed for you so that you can read through it. And it is online, but this is what led up to this point. And now we're here. And now this point is, well...
Was the engineering report based on that rap?
Yes. Yes. Everything was based on the original SECR that was done. So everything here is based on all the work to date. It sets, the original SECR sets thresholds very, you know, maybe some would say...
Worst case, in terms of...
Worst case scenario, a lot.
Right.
But maybe you only want to do here. You don't have to redo all of SECR to go down. You only have to redo SECR when you're going more than what you projected. Where we, if anything, when you really look at it and fill it all in, you may be under what we thought. So that's, that's what we can right-size and determine. It's a little more design work, maybe. But when it comes to just projecting the sewer, projecting how big the facility needs to be and the area it serves, that's the whole map and plan formation. And then with that, I'd like to just turn it over to Kathleen to talk about how that works, unless you have any other questions.
Well, I do have a question, because I can see how many years they've been working on it and how much work everyone has done on it. But, you know, when we were elected, we're elected to, you know, now with the new board composition. And so we all have to be comfortable with what's happening. And my concern is, you know, after hearing comments from people in Riverhead and others, that the density proposed, I think it's 2,300, 2,300, you know, affordable housing rental units to be put in. And I think that, you know, I believe you said the existing density is, would represent 150,000 gallons per day. So, you know, now we're going to build a plant for 800,000 gallons per day. And is that, do we need a plant that's that large? And should we reconsider what we're doing? I mean, of course, we want to revitalize Riverside. And I'm not saying back to the drawing board, but I feel a responsibility on my part to raise these concerns that I have with the sizing of it. And, you know, where do we go with that?
So let's start with just the phase one right now is 400,000. So we may say in SECR it's 800, but right now, we're really talking about 400?
But aren't we talking about constructing a plant? So aren't you constructing a facility that would accommodate 800?
They, they...
At this point, no.
No.
Is the 800 a full build-out?
It's full build-out.
And they come in modules, modules of 200.
And connection of all existing development as well.
So the... Not to get very technical, but the way we've, the way we've contemplated the treatment plant design is only to build 400,000 gallons a day, because they can be built in a modular fashion, where I can stop construction at one concrete wall and then add to that concrete wall at a later date, if necessary, for the additional 400,000 gallons a day, all right? It's several tanks that comprise the 400,000. It's 100,000 gallon modules there. Second phase would be another four 100,000 gallon modules, if it's deemed appropriate. So there's two factors that we've already considered as part of the design. One, that particular expandability of the type of process that we were looking at. And that goes across both processes that are currently accepted by Suffolk County, which is M B R, which is membrane bioreactors, and then S B R, which is sequencing batch reactors. Two different...
Don't we have to make a decision, because one is much more expensive?
We will definitely make that decision, but that's the subject of R F Q that's due today. Okay, so yes, you would make that...
We looked at the worst case scenario, which is the highest expense, the M B R, in the map and plan report.
Right.
So if you went to S B R instead of M B R, it would be cheaper. So it's never going to be more expensive.
Did that come into play with the depth and the, didn't we look at something there?
We had...
The recharge?
We had recharge discussions as well. That's, that's correct. So, but back to the second part of the point. Health Department's flow rates, which is what this system is currently designed for, we, for, we know are overstated by about 30%. So there may not be a need to go and expand those modules or build them at all based on when and/or if the theoretical would occur, all right? And that zoning portion of it is still under the control of the town as it relates to identifying what parcels that they feel would be appropriate for that zoning versus what parcels are not. That's what the key to the rap was able to do.
Also, I just want to correct something. There's not 2,500 affordable...
2,300?
2,300. That was the worst case scenario, and there was a 50% affordability component. So it was never all 100%.
Units. I meant to say units.
Yeah, but...
So the more density goes up by 2,300 units.
Which is why I agree that we should look at what the outcome and make sure you're happy with how it would. And I really suggest we do that, but that doesn't change the idea that you still need a sewage treatment facility and how it would be structured in terms of cost. It would be, if you had less, it would always be less than what we're proposing, which would be financed significantly.
Before you go too far past it, the recharge is the same for both types of system?
The recharge issue, sorry, I'll take that question.
Okay. We should start at the top, maybe.
Yeah, so that recharge issue, what they're talking about. E F C, New York State E F C, hired a consultant to do value engineering on the C W S R F report prepared by my office, okay? As part of that value engineering process, what they asked us to do was look at what are called injection wells, okay? Very uncommon on Long Island. Very, very uncommon, and very costly on Long Island, based on what they wanted to propose. Conventional subsurface sewage disposal at the treatment plant level is still a leaching pool, okay? That was our original proposal, but there were some questions that, that... Arcadis was the name of the engineering firm, raised as to that injection well and the construction of injection wells being much cheaper. Given the depth that we would need to build those wells to, it's not cheaper to do it that way. We've already evaluated that and ascertained that, and it's part of the response to comments on the C W S R F that was submitted as part of the intended use plan that E F C uses to fund the project. Okay, so that...
They made some assumptions about the depth of the wells that we're not...
Correct.
Okay.
A hundred percent.
So that part of it is, is...
That's exactly right.
What we're getting at though is like that part of it has already been, it doesn't matter if we, which type of system we go with, that recharge portion has already been kind of vetted out?
Yes.
In this document, it is vetted.
It's evaluated alternatives.
I would never agree to injection wells.
The ability to choose from different recharge options. We also had the construction, construct the pipeline option and ruled that out for... Or suggested that there's some reasons to not pursue that. So it's, you know, it's compared in the documents, and it's, you know, it's going to be up to the board to make an...
So which ways are going now? A leaching pool? Right, yeah, we've recommended leaching pools.
And that requires Pine Barrens approval, because there's clearing associated with that. And that, we're before them on that issue.
How big are the leaching pools?
I'm sorry?
How big are the leaching pools?
Approximately 320 pools total.
Okay.
Okay.
How much is each pool?
Well, the depth of groundwater in that area is fairly shallow. It's anywhere between eight and 12 feet. So that's why you have such a large number of pools.
Because you can't go down that deep.
Correct. You can't go down that deep. Typical depth is somewhere, you know, if, if you have the hydraulics correctly designed, somewhere between 12 and 16 feet of what's called effective depth, okay? Allowable leaching area recognized by Health Department. So your total depth ends up to be about 20 feet. In a normal scenario, the depth of these is going to be well below that, only about 12 feet deep at a maximum.
Are you required to have a space between the bottom of the leaching pool and the top of the water table?
Yes, three feet.
Okay.
Do you have enough property now to accommodate all the leaching pools?
Yes, we've demonstrated that through leaching pool, through a design layout, a very conceptual plan, that we were able to get enough leaching onto the parcels.
And so how does, I understand what you're saying about the components and the expansion if necessary in the future. How, if anything, does that affect the collection and conveyance system? Are we going to have to overbuild for that?
That's a great question as well. When we reevaluated this to phase it, and you'll see in the yellow areas that are on the maps, you'll see several pump stations identified that are all required at this point for phase one.
Where are the, okay.
Existing...
Phase one is yellow on the left.
Right. Phase one is yellow, and the pump stations themselves are little red squares, all right? Remember, this map is like, one is a thousand, and then it's half-scaled so that it's easier for you guys to manage.
Oh, I see. It's got, it's got arrows to it.
Correct. Yeah, so you can see where the location of those are. And all four of them need to be built, excuse me, three of the four need to be built as part of phase one. Pump station four, which is down in the south area, does not need to be built as part of phase one.
This is being sized for the existing flow in this phase one area. And I understand it's with an eye toward gearing up for more flow in the future if, if, if people, you know, build more things in the Riverside area.
Well, and also, there's existing density on both phases.
Exactly.
So there's existing, it's not, everybody existing is in phase one. It's sort of like, we tried to, you know, do a lot of existing and some new development to foster that revitalization. And then the second phase, more existing. And then it shows these upper parcels, but most of that is parkland in the second phase, so...
Our water quality grants were predicated on existing flow.
Yes.
So that's an important point, that right now, we're building this for existing flow with the ability to accommodate the rap plan with the modules that you were saying.
Correct.
Okay, that's how I understood it.
And if you wanted to say, well, this is a cap or something, we can always revisit the zoning that allowed that. If you wanted to somehow say, you know, amend it.
I would be, I would be more concerned about Riverhead's eye on our plan if it wasn't in the news every other week that they were putting up another four or five-story apartment building in Riverhead.
Seven.
I mean, it's, they're, they've, they've put their own density in and, because they have, they have an S T P. And so, you know, now we're doing the same thing. And do I think, yes, the schools need to be a consideration? Absolutely. But that's something we all have to work on together going forward, because I think their school's already at capacity. So it's going to be an issue regardless of what we do. But like I said, every week, there's something in the paper about another five-story apartment building going in and being approved in Riverside with, with, you know, in Riverhead, I'm sorry, with, with, you know, tax credits and the whole nine yards. So it's... Yes, we need to be...
Right, they have an I D A, and that's an important point, because we're being asked to consider the school district and the funding and possible, possibility of more students into the school district, whereas on the Riverhead side, they have an industrial development agency that does give tax breaks for assessments, so it's an important point.
We would, I mean, just generally, and using our own means with like community housing fund, we could say, okay, well, some of this needs to be ownership or townhouses instead of just rentals. Or, you know, there's ways that we could look at it, and we could work with them. So, you know, it's by no means shutting the door on...
I'm less, I'm less concerned with the density than I am with, and maybe this is a Len question, of the people that live in this area, I mean, you said most, the most economically distinguished disadvantaged community in Suffolk. Is it mandatory that all of these people connect? It is?
Suffolk County, usually, I'm pretty sure it's in the code, sanitary code, that once the system is online and it's installed and operational, you have like up to two years to connect. But we're talking about, the proposal here is talking about subsidizing the connections. And we're also talking about a financial plan that would subsidize the O and M costs going forward. And so we're, we're looking to make it very affordable for the existing homeowners.
I just, my concern with it is, is some of these people, I mean, you're talking about maybe $200 a year. To us, that doesn't seem like a lot, but to some of these people, I mean, I don't want to get us into a situation where they have to connect, and then all their gray water is going out into the backyard because they don't want to pay for their usage.
Well, that's not how it really works. What happens, the way sewer systems work is, there's no meter on the outflow. The meter's on the inflow. So we get a file from Suffolk County Water Authority, and so...
So you can't do that?
No.
Okay.
So you're going to pay for it anyway, as soon as you turn it off. And then you usually, usually work up an allocation for a sprinkle of usage, or if you have a pool or something that's not going into the septic system. So, you know, you might take 10 or 15% off the top, allowing for watering outdoors, and the rest is part of your bill.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about any additional bill on these people. I mean, it's hard to tell somebody that has an existing septic that's functioning, that isn't costing them anything.
We also talked about developing a plan where we can do some hardship funding for, you know, ongoing operation and maintenance costs. And the board can decide, and we can set aside funding, that if you met this criteria, we can subsidize your O and M, your annual bill, by such, such amount. That's all subject to talk.
Would that be through Suffolk County's septic improvement grant programs?
No, well, right now, we're talking internally funded, town funded. We've been in conversations with Senator McField. Very advanced conversation, going forward to him writing a bill that will allow us to access C P F funding for O and M offset charges. So if we get that and we're allowed to use, and that would be for existing development. If C P F, as you know, can't go for new development. So we would be able to utilize that funding, and that's actually something that we have to do. So on my to-do list is to reach out to Fred again and to make sure that that bill's in the hopper now that the budget has been presented. So that, that funding mechanism could be in place to address just what you're talking about.
Everyone, would have that option? Just low-income families?
We have to discuss that. It could be small business owners. It could be low-income owners. We can set thresholds. I mean, we have done this in other areas with the town code. So we can do a lot of that stuff that's subject to your discretion.
And the new density would further offset those costs?
Well, that's for sure. As we build in, like... Well, as, that's for sure, as, as we build in, like new commercial, if there's a new store or something like that, they would be paying. Into the system, so that's, that goes into the financial model.
In addition, the other reason why we made phase two like a little bit like phased out for some of these existing people, so they have some time before. They have to connect, so you have the two years, but then the phase two would have to come online before any of the purple lots had to connect. So that at least gives them, um, you know, we really want to get the existing development online, but we thought it was important to capture the mobile home parks first.
Cause I just, I know there's people in that, I'm just using an example because I know there's people in this mobile home park that, for instance. Don't even want to pay the mobile home park for garbage pickup because they just can't afford it, so, I mean, these are the types of people that we're talking about.
That's like a prime spot for us.
Yeah, I know.
It'd be great to fund the mobile home park to connect, but then have some, some agreements with the home, mobile home park that they're not going to pass on some surcharge to their residents. Because you would, under a water quality grant, potentially you would, you could, you know, offset that.
There's also a significant amount of maintenance in a septic system that, that shouldn't be overlooked since we're discussing it. I mean, if something happens with your pools, that's a, that's a, that's a lot, that's expensive. And so that's something that the homeowners, you know, will bear, you know, they have these septic systems on their own properties and, you know, God forbid something happens.
And they are getting on in years.
But I could just see.
They got a plumber in there with machines and that's not cheap either.
For instance, if it was, if you had to do a cesspool correction, it's very easily spent twenty-five hundred dollars or three thousand dollars. That's ten or fifteen years worth of O and M.
Yes, but I could see, on my side, I wouldn't hook up until I had that issue.
You'd wait till you had a failure.
Yeah.
So speaking of the hookups, the hookups are no longer an issue because we did the hookups in East Quogue for the water mains.
We're gonna fund that out of environmental quality funding of CPF.
So even though it's a benefit to the homeowners, the hookups are going to be part of this, not an issue, we're handling that, okay.
But only the existing owners?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because any new development would not be.
It doesn't qualify for the CPF money.
Which is something the community was always asking for, you know, where's the, you know, where is the overlap plan, excuse me Janet? And, and that couldn't happen until we had this district in place and so people in the community were wondering and asking us, you know, where is. You know, where's the, the Riverside rap plan?
I just.
And where is that at, so we, this was part of moving that forward because the community was asking for it.
But you'd have two people, one who owns the home now and one who buys it subsequently. And this person, the prior owner, is gonna be able to have their O and M offset, but the new owner wouldn't?
No.
It's an income, it's income qualified, it's a threshold of income, if you're low income.
But it's new development, doesn't that matter for the?
It's the same house on the new owner.
It's the same house on the new owner, yeah, I mean, it's this, theoretically, there's, it's just the existing lot, somebody new moved in. If they, if that new person who moved in, their income is low income, they would qualify for the subsidy. If the new person that moved in, they can afford the two fifty, then they would pay it, you know, that's, it's really an income thing.
I think you're saying, if there was a new parcel, like they built a new home.
Yeah, new home, one of these twenty-three hundred.
Then they would be, that would be open, they would have to pay.
We can't use the CPF to offset that.
That's what I'm saying, so a new home goes in next to a home that's already existing, this person's getting the O and M paid for by the town and this person isn't.
And you're saying it's not like ad valorem or something?
I don't know, I'm just reiterating what I'm saying.
I think you're talking about the connection.
The benefited area would be the same, it's just a matter of somebody getting help with paying that cost, so the cost is the same spread out, we can talk about that. Cost is always the same, um, the user fees are different depending on how much you're using. Um, but if, say you get a bill in the mail for your two fifty and you're under a threshold. You may want to create a program, they're saying that's up to you, to create a low income program to help them pay that two fifty.
Okay, I thought it was coming from the CPF, something Fred Dill was writing and that would only affect.
That is, it's not already.
That could, that could be separate.
We're almost talking about two different things, but that's for the new flow aspect.
The new flow, and I'm not sure how much the new flow will qualify, but then you can maybe supplement it with some other funding.
But is that, is that timed with the new, when you're saying new and old, as measured up against when the bill is passed, what's in existence at that time?
No, no, existing flow as it is now when this, this system is, is formed, right?
You're taking somebody off of an existing system.
So we've got identified five hundred parcels right now, that's existing flow.
That's existing, okay.
Right, and then if you go from five hundred to a thousand, those five hundred new are gonna be new, new flow.
New flow, new payment, new people, new, different, those old, same old people, same lot, same house, low income. We may be able to create a program around that to help them, is what we're trying to say, it's something else.
Not CPF money, it's something else.
It could be something else.
It could be that, though, you, you could potentially use more quality type money.
For the flow, now the hookups are gonna be different, if there's a new home on a, on an empty lot, they're gonna be, they're gonna be hooking up themselves.
The hookups we're gonna do is CPF.
And by the way, i- if, if I'm a builder and I have a choice between a septic system and hooking up to this, you know, I'll take that all day because it's a lot cheaper.
They don't have to put in a septic system, yeah.
But as far as moving forward, the flow may or may not qualify for, uh, funding that we have, is that correct?
That, new, new flow, no.
New flow has to be paying their freight, right?
That's your cost and you know it's going in.
Yeah, your bill is gonna be estimated, when you buy that lot, your bill is estimated at five hundred dollars a year or three hundred dollars a year.
That's part of your new construction.
So they'll know from the outset.
And you just packed it in like you would a water bill or anything else that's gonna be.
Like you also didn't have to pay fifteen thousand or twenty thousand to build a septic system.
That's right.
You know, that, that, that cost in your house is that much lower because you don't have septic.
I have one more question about the existing, so when, as these come online, as they connect to the new system. Do the old septic systems just stay in place or they were moved?
They get abandoned.
They need to be abandoned per health department regs.
So they're all, so is that part of the cost of connection, are we also removing all the old?
That's all factored into the existing stuff, right?
I'm sorry, yeah, uh, let me just confirm this with Lynn, when we did the estimates, we also included abandonment on the, on the lots.
Yeah, I, don't you, you just fill it with sand, right?
Sand it well.
It's not that complicated.
It's a ring and it gets filled with sand, and it's a little, if it's post nineteen seventy-three, there's a holding thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They have holding tanks and, yeah.
Correct, yeah, and you would just want to punch holes through the bottom of the tank to make sure.
It still costs money though, cause it has to be tested.
Yes, it does. Yeah, well, um, no, residential does not have to be tested in Suffolk, the commercial units have to be tested for, um, for pollutants, priority pollutants.
That's only if you're banning, I think, an, an oil tank, you have to test the ground around it.
Correct, well, or you have a use, if, if the county deemed your use to be hazardous, they would identify it that way. Okay, I just want to revisit one of the points that you made, um, and just build on it a little bit further. When the conveyance or the, the collection and conveyance system is constructed. We're required to leave a house connection at the property line for each and every lot that is part of this district.
That's smart.
So that's part of the incentive is already there for them to start those connections and, you know, connect as soon as they have a problem. Or a failure or something along that lines, that to, to make the point even further, maybe the town does want to consider. If a failure occurs, hey, we'll incentivize you to connect instead of trying to fix what's there. Very similar to what the health department's IA system program is, which is, look. The licensed scavenger, if, after two episodes within any given year, the licensed scavenger is supposed to put a report into. The, um, the county saying this system may be failing and you, you may want to identif- identify it for IA system.
What is a licensed scavenger?
So a pumper, a pump truck, it's a very nice term for a pump truck.
It's like a pump out, pump out truck.
Honey wagon.
Right, exactly.
On the average, do they do that?
I've run into it sporadically so far.
About they do it or don't do it?
They either do it or don't.
We would want to do like public, oh, like a public works, you know, like hook everyone up, that would be the goal here, not leave it to someone to, you know. Someday maybe, you know, we want to make it like a clear process.
We would put the lateral, we wouldn't, we wouldn't go all the way to the house, though, they would have to come from the house to the.
On the existing, we're going to that, we're doing everything.
No, we would go right to the.
Right to the, right to the house, we could do it that way.
Yeah.
That's our vendor, we would contract with a vendor.
Right to the house.
And they would go, we're on this.
You can't go on private property though.
Well, they would obviously.
They would have to acknowledge it because we're gonna have to get their, uh, their approval and stuff, sure.
It would be better to let us do it than be on a hook to do it themselves, right?
Well, you're saying it's mandatory.
Well, usually.
Well, it's mandatory if somebody does it.
You would say that we'll be paying for this through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-seven, after that date, you'll be paying for it. Pick which one you, you would like to do, and so that's kind of how you do it, it's.
It'd be cheaper for the town because they'd be doing, instead of a hundred of them.
The whole street, we'll do the whole street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd just be easier and then you know it was.
So playing devil's advocate, what if somebody says, no, I'm not doing it?
Well, we would have to do a code, I think, to, you know, have a.
There's a health code violation that I think Suffolk County Health Department is covering issue.
So it's, it's typically a hundred and eighty days, okay, we, we had discussed at one point, the town has the option to extend that timeline, but it still should be finite.
Okay.
All right, and, and the suggestion that I had made personally was two years was what I thought was.
Say with that many systems.
Yeah, wa- was appropriate for saying, okay, you have up to two years to make your connection. There's a huge environmental benefit that I want to just bring up one more time to everybody, by making this connection. And revitalizing at the same time, you're seeing a huge decrease in nitro- nitrogen discharge. Excuse me, let me rephrase that, a ten percent decrease in nitrogen discharge over what's existing there now. And you're increasing your tax base significantly because of the overlay that's there.
Do we know what that number is, how much nitrogen will be mitigated?
Uh, off the top, I don't remember, I seem to, I seem to recall.
But we will.
I had it.
Four, four, four and a half pounds versus, I don't want to, I don't want to misquote, so I don't recall.
So, a- and, and the other part of it is how, you know, we, we did this assuming the, you know, full build out, so depending on how much is actually built. The more you connect, you know, that nitrogen goes, levels go down and you're not adding new nitrogen into the system, so. Um, so right now, um, existing density concentration is four point five eight.
But in existing system is truly like forty to sixty milligrams per liter, right? And so you're going from forty to sixty per system to less than, I'd say ten.
Yes.
That's a significant change.
And that's nitrogen that's not going into the Peconic Bay system.
Yeah, that different, that delta is, is saved.
That's one of the reasons why we're doing this.
Why you're doing this, exactly.
That's what's enabled us to qualify for all this grant money, right?
And that was they started.
That's the state's incentive for us to do this.
And nitrogen load reduction calculation, we didn't have a separate study done by anybody.
We did that by the, the nitrogen load was done as part of the EIS process, correct?
Yeah, the original GEIS, we, we ran the nitrogen analysis, and like I said, depending on. But that is, you know, that assumed new development, existing conditions, it improves if you were to connect every, you know, existing hole.
Do you know if those are similar numbers that we see in the village of West Hampton Beach and the village of Sag Harbor where we do have wastewater treatment facilities?
I don't know that.
I don't know the, I'm sure there was an analysis done.
Yeah, I'm sure there was.
Yeah.
But before we get too far down the road, I just want to talk about the map and plan.
Yeah, why don't we have the presentation?
The legal process, the legal process.
Because that's important to file that.
Well, let's see what you have here for the map and plan.
Yes.
Sure, so, um, you know, as we've talked about, the RAP and the ROD zoning simply cannot be realized without the sewer district. And, um, obviously it's always been a goal that the homeowners within that proposed district pay as little as possible, if anything. And so in the efforts to try and get that funding, um, we've realized that we really have to, um, start the process of establishing the sewer districts. So that we can be eligible for that funding, um, and that's where EFC has come in and other state and municipal grants, so. Um, typically, I'll just, you know, for those of you who might not be so familiar with it. Um, the New York State Legislature has identified those section, that those projects for which, um, special improvement districts can be formed and funded. Article twelve A of New York State Town Law addresses that, and a sewer district is of course, one of those areas in which you can. Um, establish a district and tax the property owners, so, within that district. So, um, essentially to oversimplify it, it's a three-step process, your first step is the adoption of a map, plan and report. Prepared by an engineer, which we have, that was authorized by Town Board Resolution number one, three, five, six of two thousand and twenty-three. In November, uh, November fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, and that authorized your consultants here to begin that, um, process. So this is the map and plan, we haven't yet filed it in the town clerk's office, um.
Isn't that what we're here today, to review the map and plan that was authorized in November that you then created and now you're gonna present to the board to go through it?
That's what we're talking about right now.
Oh, okay, I thought you said it's been, you were talking about filing it already.
Well, when we file it for, uh, so that it's available for public review inspection, that would be on Tuesday.
It's a draft right now, um. Yeah.
W- w- we could, you know, and so your notice of public hearing, um, that I put for you all and that's on, uh, the draft agenda today. Um, is basically, uh, a compilation, like the information that matters under the state law for what's in here. So, um, I'll just go through with you quickly, if you have that resolution in front of you. Um, the first five pages are legal description of that boundary for the district. That's required by law, that'd be in there. And on the top of page six, you will see the recitals that are necessary under New York State Town Law. And those recitals are taken from the map, the plan and the report, right? These are, this is information that we've gotten from this map plan and report, and then once you have the public hearing, that's what you're going to be listening to. You can amend the map plan and report if, you know, what you hear at the public hearing isn't something that, um, you'd like. So you look at, um, you know, numbers one, two and three, um, one, two, three and four are really just basic legal recitals. Indicating that this is the project, right, it's a sewer district. Um, number five is really where, um, we start to talk about the cost. The maximum amount proposed to be expended for the improvement is approximately thirty-five million, five hundred twenty-five, six hundred thirty-four dollars. That is approximately thirty-three million, six two one, one three four attributable to the construction costs. And approximately nine oh four, five hundred attributable to the hookup fees, again, all of this has to be, um, noticed pursuant to the law. And approximately one million attributable to the annual operation and maintenance costs, so those are some large numbers. The very next paragraph, number six, says those construction costs, as well as the design and the permitting. Are going to be financed through various funding sources comprised of grants, and then we've identified that grant, those granting sources right in there. So the first, two hundred fifty thousand from Suffolk County, that's the ARPA money, the second.
Oh, the first is a, um, sorry, the water quality.
Oh, sorry, water quality, the second, five million from.
WQPRP?
Yes.
Yep. Uh, the second is the five million from Suffolk County Federal Infrastructure Funding.
That's the ARPA, right.
That's the ARPA, thank you, the third is a five million federal member item grant, that's the Senator Schumer money, fourth is.
Has that been confirmed, I mean, we actually have the letter saying that that's.
Yes, we, um, we are working on getting it, but yes, we have that confirmed and now it's a matter of completing our NIPA. Federal, it's like SECR, but a little different, and that needs to be completed before they'll give it to us, but we do have it.
The way you access the grant is through EPA, federal EPA, and they have a pretty long list of requirements. And so we're working on knocking off those requirements in order for them to answer the letter.
Is this legislation required to acquire that grant money? In other words, do we have to form the district in order to really?
Yes, yep, you can't really avail yourself to the EFC money, the ARPA money, um, ARPA money is construction cost, the EFC money, you have to form a district. Um, and the, uh, congressional money.
Okay.
So that's why we're at that formation of the district point in order to obtain these funds. But these funds have been identified and confirmed, sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay, excuse me, um, so numbers, again, paragraph six, number four, the New York State EFC grant in the amount of fourteen million, seven, six, two, eight, one, seven. Five, the CPF water quality improvement grant in the amount of seven point five million dollars. And six remaining funds from an existing CPF allocation in the amount of two oh one, two, eight, one, seven. All of those funding sources add up to thirty-four, five, two, five, sixty-four. The remaining one million dollars that's, um, attributable to the annual operation and maintenance is proposed to be funded in part through a town subsidy. And then, um, the remaining two twenty-five annually for the user fee, which is what you were concerned about. Um, number eight talks about the estimated hookup fees and the, um, town law requires that we're specific about how we calculated those hookup fees. So that nine oh four, five hundred, um, if you look at that, it's indicated how many lots and what it's gonna cost for each of those. And then on the following page, um, number nine. Uh, the assessments for the capital costs shall be based upon a benefit basis utilizing ad valorem values. However, the capital costs will be funded as described in what you just told you in paragraph six. So the assessments for property owner usage shall be based on the benefit basis measured by what they use. But we do not intend for anybody to have to pay for any capital costs associated with the project. Um, and, and frankly, we would never get part eighty-five approval from the state comptroller's office because they're going to be looking at affordability of this district, right? They're going to look at affordability for this tax and we would, we would not be able to show them that affordability for these residents in this area. Without all of those grant funding sources. And we would, we would not be able to show them that affordability for these residents in this area without all of those grant funding sources.
To, to, uh, Councilwoman McNamara's, uh, question earlier with sensitivity to some of the economic circumstances in this area. How does the tax, um, the formation of the, the tax district impact their taxes by, i- i- if there is any impact whatsoever? It's all the costs that we're, we're looking at now?
No, it's two hundred and twenty-five dollars per year, that's a number ten.
And that's what we're saying, we're looking at ways to try to, um, provide accommodations somehow.
For a low income.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Their sewer bill is separate from their tax bill, right?
Is it, um?
It's a special tax district, so it's going to be on, you know, your.
Your tax.
So everybody's usage will be calculated and then as a line item on their tax bill?
No, no.
No, right?
We'll, we'll send out annual bills, um, for the prior year, the usage comptroller's office, or somebody will send out the bills.
Tori, this is not it.
Somebody that's gonna be running the sewer district.
Well, that has to be determined.
You will also select to be running it.
Whether or not this is.
I mean, there's.
Yeah, maybe it's the farm area or something.
Gotta, somebody's gotta.
It'll be, it'll be similar to like how the water district.
Correct, yeah. And you would be the commissioners, you would be the ones to, you know, just the same way.
So to your point, Councilman, paragraph ten, we have to identify the cost to a typical property owner. And we've identified that cost as approximately two hundred twenty-five dollars at this point in time. We certainly hope to have programs that can, um, you know, reduce that cost. But that is what we're required to notify in this order.
And the cost per home is gonna be determined by the number of bedrooms, correct?
No, 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 by the amount of usage.
Their usage, whatever it is.
We estimated it based on the amount of bedrooms. That's how you came up with the single-family equivalent, I think you used.
Okay.
So that's how we estimated usage. But actual bill, if you're, you know, a single-family or one person, two, you know, your usage is gonna be much less.
So you could pretty much really drill down on what the costs are gonna be based if you're, if you're going in, then their water bill. Would be a very.
That's how we do it, that's how he does it in the first place.
One of the analyses that we did when we projected floor rates for this district was based on water bills. Okay? The, the challenge with the water bills for a proposed district though is there's a lot of vacant properties there that still needed to be contemplated. And that's where the floor rates that we've designed for reflect four hundred thousand gallons a day. Because there's, you know, potential build out under your existing zoning that needed to be looked at as well.
But what I'm just saying for, for homeowners, existing homeowners could get, once this is more down the road, could say, you know, here's my water bill, what's my expected usage fee?
We can put a calculation to that.
Yeah, and, and if we could also bring that to the community too, I know that the.
A flow chart.
Yeah, I know that, you know, the community is very supportive of revitalization, so I understand the importance of this project. But I do think, uh, to the Councilwoman's point, if we could try to find, find a way to, to, to provide that to the residents on, on what to expect. That would be a great way to sort of open up the conversations so they know what are the steps that will come after that.
Yeah, if you, you know, like just a flow chart, if you get a hundred gallons of water, it's gonna be bad.
Well, that's, that's easy enough to calculate, because that's how we came up with the two hundred twenty-five gallons per day for an average household. That's, that's the number, so now if you multiply that out for the year, the, the still, the homeowners don't have to really look at their bill. It's not so easy to go back to your water bill and figure it out.
Suffolk County Water issues their usage based on hundreds of cubic feet.
Yeah.
It's a lot, it, you know, we're designing on gallons per day. I can tell you seven hundred forty-eight gallons is one hundred cubic feet. But not, the average person is not gonna, is gonna have to look for that information unless we provide it to them. So to your point, that can be part of the bottom, hey, when you look at your water, water bill, here's where your usage is. It's in C C F, hundreds of cubic feet. You just need to do this simple multiplication or division to get what you need.
Calculator on the website, so people can just dump in there.
Dump in the C C F.
Yeah, it's not a straight, it's not a straight across.
Well, it could be, it could be provided to them that this is really, uh, this is not, you know, specifically what it's going to be, it's an approximation. I think that that's, that's helpful.
But if it's not based on bedrooms and it's based on water usage, then the people with pools or irrigation are gonna pay more than the people that don't have it. And that water is not getting sent back to be treated at the plant.
Typically, you provide a, a factor, a reduction factor in summer months for that. So the typical person uses their irrigation system from April first until, uh, October thirtieth. Or a little bit smaller, depending on where you are.
Cause you can go like if you use a hundred gallons in October.
And it's even more of an incentive for people to conserve their water usage.
So you can, you can average it, yeah.
Sometimes what you, uh, municipalities do is they also allow, if you feel that you're getting disproportionately charged, you can add into your code. That if you wanna put a separate meter on your sprinkler system, you can. And then we'll, we'll accept that and we'll back that out of your total. So that's another option to account for all of that. Uh, and so municipalities do do that as part of their sewer charge calculation. And then sometimes it's just easier, let's just take fifteen percent off the top and be done with it. And you start with that, and then if you can prove higher by a separate meter, then then we'll, we'll take that into consideration too. And then this calculation is done at the, like in January of the year, or February, and the bills go out sometime in March.
Len, do you have?
Kind of how the cycle works.
Do you have a percentage in mind of what we would charge? I know other municipalities charge twenty percent of the water usage for, for sewage charge. Twenty percent of your water? Okay, it's an equation, that's later.
Yeah.
We don't, okay.
Well, you would get a bill, people, if, again, if you use the average usage, you would get a bill somewheres in the area of two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars. That's kind of what we're estimating.
Annually.
Annually, and that's it. That's your se- that's your se- that's your septic bill, nothing else. No, and you don't have to worry about anything else. Forgetting about, I mean, you can't forget about it, but all the environmental stuff is way, way, way over the top. But just on an individual homeowner basis, that's what it's gonna cost.
About twenty-four dollars a month?
No, no, you would, you would do the private operation, this is a vendor.
Several, several considerations for how you can operate that facility if you want it, you would, you can use a private contract, contract operator, right? And it, before we, before I get that deep into it, your speedies permit is gonna dictate how much you need to staff that facility too, okay? But remember that you're also operating the conveyance system as well. So there's four pump stations that will need maintenance as well as the sewage treatment plant. If there's blockages in the gravity portion of the collection system, someone's gonna have to come out and maintain that as well. So you can do an on-call.
And monitor.
And monitor. You can do private operator and monitor. Or, you know, and, um, Suffolk County has in the past accepted these facilities for dedication, it becomes a county facility, okay? They did that in Port Jeff, uh, Stony Brook had a private facility and they transmit flow now to the county, the county took over the system.
We would have to figure what's the best for the people in the town.
Monitoring, yeah, exactly.
Speaking about the county, the county is actually, and Riverhead has indicated that the county center, they're interested in hooking up into our system. I mean, Riverhead is pushing that.
Cause they're not getting paid.
Well, that, that, it's, I think that they want the flow in their system to free up more development. That's really the thing, I, I, I ultimately, the county.
That's what, how it's got put to, like, it's using this much flow that we could use elsewhere in the area.
Send this over to you, it's in your town, you take the flow.
In their defense, they, I told them that and they said they would like to come back and talk more about what they want it for and why they want them off, so I would just.
How much?
Suspend judgment on that until the.
They were one of our.
Ninety, ninety thousand gallons a day was what was said at the, uh, the draft hearing.
So would the, would the four hundred cover the first state and theirs?
Yeah. Obviously, that would limit new, new growth, but that's.
That's not just, that's not just the jail, right?
That's the county center, the whole thing, like there's courts and. No, they gave us their records, it was, um, like ninety-three or something.
Ninety, yeah, well, it was, it, they have monitoring records because there's a pump station that conveys flow over to the district. So there's a flow meter on that pump station from what I understand.
And that's the whole facility, jail and court system?
It's directly across, uh.
On the bridge?
Oh, yeah.
What is it?
It's on the bridge, yeah.
Pretty sure it's directly across on the river from twenty-four is where the pump station.
But I think it's important to confirm all the numbers that, with the county and figure out that that's, you know. But I think the, um, sewer.
Janice?
Operator gave us that number.
I had a question, you know, this is brought up too. What, what happens if, if something out of the district like the jail or more development over here wants, wants to hook up?
Well, the jail you would put in as a district boundary and another phase, like let's say.
That's what I wanted.
We don't have it on here as phase one, so I would recommend, you know, as a response to comments in our SECR. You could say, well, we'll look at it, and it would have to be a separate phase or a different time. And, and you'd map it out, and then we'd have to do a, a district, um.
Extension.
Extension.
Could you do?
And who would fund that? They would fund that?
I'm sorry. Uh, who, that's all like an amended map and plan, and they, you know, you gotta figure all that out, you can't just add it in. You have to be like, okay, what's their user fees, how much does this cost, is it changing?
If we went that route and we did the county as a separate thing, could you add, see, we had the four hundred, four hundred thousand, could you add one of those one hundred thousand gallon tanks just for the county center?
Yep, yes, with a small caveat, you add two modules at a time because it's more efficient to do so. Okay, so you would go from four to six and then to eight hundred thousand if you wanted.
It always goes in.
And I would assume we could go to the county for funding on that if.
Hope, I would hope.
Their.
Well, you wouldn't accept it unless it was all wrapped up in a contract, right?
And we should keep in mind that they are, they have granted us five million, two hundred and fifty thousand now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, there's a correction here. So they said the Suffolk County Health Department, it's, it's more than they said. I think we were separating the two, so it would be, um, everything is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So we were thinking correctional, separate in courts.
Right.
So I'm sorry, so.
So there's your two modules.
It says, here's what it says, the Suffolk County Department of Health design flow shows the correctional facility at a hundred and twenty-two thousand gallons per day. And the county center in courts at forty-seven thousand for a total of one sixty-nine. However, the meter shows closer to an average of a hundred as the total.
Maybe they didn't build out either.
So the design flow is one thing, like we said, we, you design it to one thing, but the actual is typically less. So we're not, we weren't wrong, it, it, the, the actual is a hundred, but the design flow is one sixty-nine.
And, and also recall, remember what I had stated to you guys earlier, that the county flow rates are overstated by about thirty percent right now. So when they said Suffolk County design flow rates in this statement, I think they already knew that they were overstating the amount, the capacity that you would need to give to them for connection.
Does it work that way though? Can you?
If you can demonstrate a hundred thousand gallons a day is what you need for your connection. And there's, they don't need any further expansion, any further building or any of that, that, that you can do. But if there are plans for redesign or upgrade of the facility or anything else. Then you need to reserve capacity for them at a later date, and that's subject to, if you choose to do that, right?
Based on design flow.
Correct, and it's based on design flow.
Okay, thank you, I just, I remembered seeing that.
No, that's important, I'm sorry, and that was where that came from. I knew that, uh, we kept saying a hundred, but that was the actual, not the design flow, so I'm sorry for.
No, that's fine, thanks for clarifying.
Janice, the, the fourteen million, uh, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand from the state of New York, is that considered part of the environmental justice, justice initiative? That the state is, is pushing in the past couple of years?
It is, the environmental justice piece here is that we, we, in going through that whole value engineering process. We are eligible for zero percent financing for thirty years. So that means you can bond, put everything on like the balance sheet, and then you're getting back the grant money as you're spending it down, right? And that was.
While this money comes in.
And this money comes from the bipartisan infrastructure law. Uh, money that flows through E F C. So it comes through federal government to E F C. We were listed on the intended use plan, and this is the allocation, which is fifty percent generally of the construction costs. Is that, am I saying that right? Okay, good.
And, uh, yeah, fifty, and, and what we would do, because you, we're gonna have to lay out thirty-five million dollars here, we would basically set up like a letter of credit. And they would be interest-free. And as the vendor claims came in, we would pay them out of this letter of credit. And that, that would continue to increase, and then we would put our vouchers in, uh, to, to get the state aid claims. And so we would never be out money, it would just be a flowing, a transaction.
And that's the beauty of E F C is that they're a lending arm, so it's never on your books, it's on.
At some point, we'll have to do, um, once the district is approved, we'll have to do bond resolutions. And we'll get bond counsel in to approve the bonding, uh, to, to allow for the, for this letter of credit, uh, yeah, so that's.
A lot of those grants are reimbursable grants, so that means you lay out the money, then they wait a year.
Oh, yeah, that's why we need the letter of credit, absolutely.
But E F C and ARPA are already like, they're, they're, like, right away, they'll give you money, you know, from the get-go.
She's correct, that's why we, we wanna get this interest-free line of credit to fund us while we're waiting for the reimbursement.
But you still have to, I think you still have to lay out, so you pay the contractor.
Yes.
And E F C, no, but E F C gives you the money and then you put in to get refunded. I mean, I don't think E F, you can just pull from E F C.
No, 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 but they're pretty quick, they turn it around within a week. I, I mean, I've done this with them, so they, you send in a voucher, once this is all established and you send them in a bill, uh, it's signed off by the design engineer, like, there's a process. And once the design engineer says, yes, this vendor submitted the bills for concrete, and it, yes, and then the, our, our construction engineer signs off on it, that package goes in. You submit it, they'll wire you the money within a week.
We have to have at least, let's just say, five million dollars to be able to pay the vendors to be there and be reimbursed.
Probably, yeah, sure, yeah, sure, but we'll, remember, we have C P F money in the, in account, so.
We have a whole capital project that we're, yeah.
Capital fund with about nine million in it, so.
Right, but remember, C P F can be used for the non-C P F.
Right, once we're doing construction, it's kind of all blended.
Well.
Gotta keep it some type of separated.
And enumerated, well.
Yes, like your point. So let's give map and plan presentation.
That was it.
What?
What did you wanna?
No, I thought you were gonna go through the map and plan with us. I mean, we don't, I don't have the map and plan, does everybody have a copy of it already?
Are you talking about the financials, like that we just went over with?
You know.
The actual, like sewer on the plan?
No, I mean, the document that's called the map and plan that they go through, you know, how much, I mean, the different options.
You mean where the mains would go and the pump?
Well, no, that map and plan is gonna be given to you, I don't, I think it's almost final before the hearing, right?
We, we have to finalize one, one financial, so that document is more of a financial, legal document than it is an engineering document. For the purposes of district formation for any municipality, okay?
Do you, yeah, maybe she want, you're talking about the C W S R F, like the engineering, actual engineering report or this, like, take, take a look at that and see, make sure.
That's, that's the map and plan.
I don't like the idea of scheduling a public hearing for something that we didn't even go through yet and it's not even complete.
Well, we have financials, we have Len's financials, they're gonna be here tomorrow.
So that's what I. That'll be complete by Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
That will be complete by Friday afternoon, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that's what I'm saying.
Tomorrow.
Kyle's currently working on it right now.
Okay.
So, uh, what about it is not complete? I mean, there is, everything is complete, okay. So I was gonna say we are complete, the only difference is what?
You're gonna publish, I, I think it's.
I just thought we were gonna have this up on the screen so that you could walk us through, you know, um, the different.
So sorry.
You know, the different things that are highlighted here that are relevant to the discussion.
So we are confused.
Like, I think we've talked about.
Yeah.
Most of the things that are in that map and plan, which is the, the project descri- the description of what we're gonna be building, the map, right? That's the map, the plan of how we're gonna do it. The finances is how we're gonna talk about the finances, which is also a big component of that, and we've talked about that. And then a lot of the rest of the stuff in there is like actually identifying the parcels, you know, uh, the, the tax map number, you know, that's kind of real in the woods kind of stuff, but.
Yeah, but the, the, the options about, you know, the different types of, um, systems and how, you know, how that would.
So that's, that's the SECR, that's confusing to.
No, but that should be in the map and plan too, the cost of the, the cost of.
Now, so, and again, I'll, I'll say it to you in such fashion so that you understand the, the impact of that map and plan report. Is a final document forming a district around which either the state comptroller or the town board or the combination of the two says. Here's what it's going to cost the average consumer for sewage disposal within this boundary is the goal of that whole report. So to go through the options analysis that was done as part of C W S R F and secret determination. The map and plan report is a final document based on the options analysis done as C, C W S R F.
Right, so I think what you're saying is more of a G E I S.
Yeah, but also to your point, we are trying to.
Yeah, but also to your point, we are trying to match the hearings up so that the secret hearing and this hearing will be, can travel together. Um, so you have Tuesday, you have another, uh, you have another secret hearing. And then this, um, proposal is setting the public hearing for February thirteenth. We have time limitations in which we have to set a public hearing. And so the goal would be to then adjourn also the SECR again to February thirteenth so that they could meet up and if, you know.
And so during the public hearing, will you be, will you be presenting on this to the public? Would, would you, will you be getting up there and explaining?
So I think what you're looking for is this, that's already ongoing, is the SECR. The SECR talks about all the options, the MBR, SBR, what, what, that's here.
But I thought, once you get the options, here's the options, now we're gonna say,
Yes.
This is what we're going to do and this is what it's gonna cost.
Yep.
And this is what it'll cost the taxpayers. If we get this grant, if we don't get this grant, here's all that in here.
We got all the grants. That's the whole point.
But we didn't even apply for that EFC grant. So I don't understand.
Oh, yes, we did.
Oh, no, the application's due in June. That's what they said on the phone. They might've said that if everything looks good when you submit it, we would give you that. But I didn't think we had it even in writing.
We have everything. What we don't have is, uh, financing, closing on financing.
We close on financing.
What was that meeting we had in my office where we were talking to EFC and they said, you can apply in June, but you know, once you have everything.
That's the financing doc, that's to close on the finance. We told, that's the whole like great news.
Yeah, we've had this in place and that's why we were, cause we were talking about doing a town, a whole townwide taxing district for this to spread the cost out over the town. We didn't have to do that because we got all this grant funding.
Sorry, well, my mistake then, cause I thought you said that we hadn't actually gotten a letter that was official in writing that we.
But that's why we are.
Getting the grant.
Right, but that's, if you recall, that's why we did call them in your office and they confirmed that we are getting it. And then they sent us that link. Um, I don't have it figured out.
It's the intended use plan.
It was on the intended use plan where identified.
Where it shows us as approved for funding.
Right, and they said you can rely on this until you get our letter.
That was it, the award. Um, they will follow up with the additional paperwork, but that just, it just hasn't left their office. And I think it's more of a PR thing other than anything else, cause I think the governor probably wants to come down and.
Cut a ribbon?
Yeah, I mean, I thought we didn't, we, they said the application's due in June.
That's the financing application, meaning, not a grant application, meaning like what Lenin, like the actual like zero percent for thirty years.
Right, before June, we would need to have our bond resolutions in place. Yeah, we would have to have our bond resolutions in place. And there's a basically like a closing. We have a, a closing with EFC and that's what takes place at that point. And, uh, we, uh, you know, have a letter of credit in place and, I mean, we're gonna need our bond counsel to really kind of lead us through it.
The, the, the best news in all of this is that this is being like almost a hundred percent funded. Like this is unheard of. This is like really great. Um, so, uh, I just wanna point out that we have, um, really tried to make it so that we didn't use town.
You, you succeeded. You've acquired twenty-seven million dollars in grants from federal, county and state. So, thank you.
And I'd also like to thank Theresa Mason for her work on it as well.
A hundred percent. She's in the audience over here, kind of whispering in my ear and just back there and not up here, but, um.
It's a good team.
It's a good team effort.
And I said twenty-seven million minus our water quality grant, so.
Right, and so the idea here is that we can go at the public here and give you a little more. We did a presentation, but of course you weren't on the board yet. So we can certainly do that again.
Don't take it as a criticism. It's that we weren't here and we wanna make sure we have a full understanding of all the financing before we go ahead with it because it's thirty, you know, five million dollars. So you have to be patient with the questions and.
Oh, it's a hundred percent. Um, I'm just trying to say.
So when you're gonna do it at the public hearing, give the whole thing, you're gonna give a, on a screen too? Have a screen show?
If you would like that.
Yeah, cause that way the.
A PowerPoint.
PowerPoint.
We can do that and.
You don't?
No.
I want a public hearing?
No, cause we have Zoom on.
Oh, that's true.
I want to get a public hearing, so just listening.
Yeah, we have, cause we have Zoom on.
Some people asked about that.
Yeah.
Well.
They should watch the, they should watch the work session.
Kathleen, you usually describe what is going on for the map and plan at a public hearing, right, before?
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was, that's what I was saying.
Just the nuts and bolts. It's the nuts and bolts. Heard here today. So if there's more, I'm happy to take your feedback and provide.
No, I just think at the public hearing, I think that would be great if we can kind of just give a brief overview of what we discussed here. You know, because I'm sure there will be some people from the public who will wanna hear a little bit about it and.
Absolutely.
I'd be very curious.
Yeah, yeah, and just in terms of transparency and openness with the folks that come and, and wanna learn more about it, I think it's just a, a good show.
Yeah.
That's right off of the EFC webpage.
Lynn, wasn't there something that they said we had to back out the Schumer money?
Yes, that's why we had to make some adjustments to the finance. That's why the report is not finalized as of right now.
Exactly.
We had to make some adjustments at the last minute to do some reallocations of CPF money and. You said.
EFC said that the five, so Schumer could not be included. So we had to back that out because you couldn't have, it'd be double the things that are speech.
So is that reflected in the resolution?
Yes, yes.
Those are the updated numbers.
And that's already part of your packet. The biggest thing is that it's almost all public grant money except the operation and maintenance costs, which would be a million dollar subsidy from your budget somehow. That is the only outstanding thing. And then the cost to the average homeowner at two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Janice, can you, or somebody can, give them an idea of the timeline before now and when we actually flush the first toilet?
Before, before we, before we do that.
When we, when it's that.
Are you showing me that?
Go ahead.
Before we, yeah, before we do the timeline, can I just ask, so the, the, the five million we're not getting, is that, did I hear that correctly? We're getting it. Okay.
We're getting it. Uh, it had, it could not be included in EFC's match. So we.
They want you to take it off the top.
Supervisors aware of different numbers.
The EFC, the EFC money is not like just a, a fixed number. It's fifty percent of the net costs.
Right.
So you have to do calculations and they didn't want us to include not taking that federal money out.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to like subtract it.
That we were gonna have to bond some money because.
We may have, but then we looked at our CPF allocations and we have currently enough allocation there to make up that shortfall. Uh, using local CPF money.
We're still getting it, we just can't put it in the.
The, the EFC doesn't care like what you use it for. They just wanna take it off the top and say, we give you the grant after you deduct what you've already got. So you can't double dip, right? It's as simple as that. Just like we do with our IA systems. We say, well, what are you getting? And then we say, we'll fund the balance, the bottom line.
We've allocated approximately ten million from our community preservation.
But I thought they only gave the seven and a half million.
No, they give more.
They gave one.
I, I looked and, uh, we, just this year, twenty, I mean, in twenty twenty-three, they allocated six million dollars. In twenty twenty-two, it was two and a half million. And in twenty twenty-one, there's additional, the two million dollars that it's mentioned in the resolution. So there's over ten million dollars allocated already from CPF water.
But some of that is to pay like obviously the engineering costs. Um, two million is set aside as a match if, cause we also, the last grant we're waiting on is state water quality grant money.
In twenty twenty-one.
Was the match for that. So that was a set aside match money. If we don't get it, then we can use it, um, for something different. But we may still actually get some more. We're just waiting on that final grant.
So in twenty twenty-one, we thought it was important for this district to be in place and to mitigate nitrogen into the Hampton Bays and for environmental justice reasons. That's why we, uh, allocated the two million dollars in twenty-one early to jumpstart this process and made it one of our priorities and our funding priorities, uh, moving forward. And so we did put local monies and I think that, that you all did a fine job in, uh, scaling that money up and acquiring other grants.
If you didn't do that, we would have never had that leverage to use it. And, and I also would note, one of the, some of that two million, the other two million is for the acquisition of the five towns. It still has not closed.
The, um, I, I also wanna mention that a lot of this stuff, timing is really critical. Um, the offer money has to be spent relatively quickly. The state money has to be in place relatively quickly. Um, not so much the federal allocation that I think can last, but some of the other money really, the, the timing. It's not like we're trying to rush this through, but we don't wanna give away all this free money. So we're trying to move it as prudently as possible, but at the same time trying to get it going because the clock is ticking and all of these things, thirty-day waiting period, another sixty days. Then it just, there's always this waiting. And before you know it, you're running out of time to get this thing and a shovel ready capacity. And that's what, that's why we're, it, it, it does, it may seem that we're trying to push this along, but it, it's only because of the funding parameters that, that's really driving it. Not, not us trying to do anything else.
Better to have these funding grants versus put it on the taxpayers of the town. So we're trying to make sure we get the grant.
For the longest time, there was no sewer money available. Like twenty years go by, you know, since Southwest Sewer District, it dried up completely. You know, I've been in the camp, I've been along, there was no money around, no federal money, nothing. So we are blessed with having all of a sudden this infrastructure money that we can avail ourselves to. And it's, it's, uh, you know, the right thing to do. I mean, that's just where we are.
Yeah.
What, uh, just really quick, how long is this process? High level?
High level? You're, you're probably in a, in a three to four-year process before you make your first connection from the point of district formation.
So it's not even that quick, even though that's quick. Yeah, so.
Well, I feel a lot more comfortable now after having this meeting and these conversations. Cause it is a big project that was, you've done a lot before we got here. And so we needed to make sure we understood it all. And, um, I feel comfortable with it and hopefully everybody else does. My only last question is the, the thirty-five million, does that cover all the engineering, design, report and costs? Um, and the construction or is this just construction costs?
It's inclusive.
It's inclusive. So we've seen paragraph number six, the construction costs as well as design permitting and consultation costs shall be financed through various funding sources. Um, that comes to the thirty-four million. The one million for O and N, you cannot bond that. So that's why that's, um, separate. And that's proposed to be subsidized through, uh, the general fund and then they do the fees for the homeowners at the two twenty-five.
We'll, we'll need, Maria, we'll need to schedule a meeting with Fred, with Janice, and we'll go through some allocation of this, uh, CPF environment quality money for the O and N. So we'll have to do that. We'll schedule it with Jackie, uh, soon.
And until then, the, the burden, I guess, on the town is only a million dollars versus thirty-five.
You run the plant and for maintenance?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We would, at some point, once it's operational, we'll put out an RFP for private vendors to give us proposals on what they were charged to, to be on call and fix whatever comes up or whatever.
And then as it's up and running, it's paid for by itself. Like that's just to get it kind of going.
That's also kind of why it's important to have some of that development in the mix in phase one, cause you wanna be able to have those fees from.
So the, the fees would go, um, who would send out the bills for the fees, the, the district itself?
Yeah, you'd have to set up like a wa, like a water district type of thing.
Yeah, and once it's set up, you know, what towns do is they charge a hookup fee, right? And that's variable. It can be whatever. And then there's classes of hookups. A restaurant might pay one, you know, rate or high in a user, if you have a brew, brewery or something like that, that, you know, impacts, uh.
So we would have to hire someone more helping that, and here to.
Probably at some point they're gonna designate, there'll be a sewer system division or something like that.
That's why I was getting at.
Yeah, and, yeah, when it starts to get ready, you'll have probably, there'll be a subset of some department, I don't, you know, wherever.
Well, there will have to be like a department, just like everybody's one of those.
It could be part of, it could be part of, uh, you know, um, engineering, you know, where they, cause they have the landfill. It could be part of that.
I'm sure Tom wants more.
Or you do.
So this would be our first sewer district in unincorporated Southampton town.
Correct.
And so it, that's, those are fair questions.
Yeah.
And we are looking to do, uh, to install others.
Yes.
And we have a commitment to mitigate nitrogen.
Hampton Bays is right on the heels of this.
Right, we have a commitment to mitigate nitrogen and Hampton Bays and, uh, you know, other areas I know are talking about this. So, you know, I think this is a good model that we work off of. Thank you.
We might be back with you with Hampton Bays within six months at a similar point.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about.
And we dedicated monies to research different siding areas.
And then we have to work on that cycle, right?
Probably get the same grants again.
We gotta put together applications for that and, yeah, it's.
That's a whole nother.
Another whole, it's another whole process.
Yep.
Community input, we know.
Yeah.
Transparent.
And, and we have been on this, in, in my opinion, we've been very transparent. And the community, again, like I said, they've been screaming for this.
Yeah, I mentioned that at the outset.
Yeah, and, uh, of course, we're happy to do any additional design work surrounding like what's the outcome? What's it gonna look like? How's it gonna feel and make sure everybody's comfortable? I think that's very important and a good idea.
What did you call the book? What is that called? The?
This, the rap.
No, 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 the, for, with respect, the pattern book with respect to Hampton Bays.
Yeah.
So is that what we would do here? So, s- sort of?
You, actually, you could do that.
I think that's a great idea, yeah.
That's a good idea. So we can look into that. And we have some time because you have at least a year of engineering work that has to happen.
Correct.
Um, so, like, hundred percent engineering, we have the engineering report, but then there's still like literally surveying and getting the elevations and topos and stuff like that. That has to still take place and that's that RFQ that's out right now.
Right.
Um, so that we'll, we'll be hiring, uh, that next phase. So you have some time in addition to them while they're doing all the, how the pipe and infrastructure will be.
Excellent.
And it's entirely appropriate that we do that and that we discuss this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, so are we, are we scheduling the map and plan?
It's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that will be February thirteenth, but on Tuesday, Nelson and Pope will be back to do the secret part of this. It's, I think what you were hoping for today.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Well, a little more.
Can we, Janice, can we do the agenda review if they're gonna be online? Can they go do that?
I'd be happy to go over technical details with you at any time. So, you know, from a design.
Can we do the agenda?
Criterion standpoint, environmental benefit versus cost impact.
Can we do them after the agenda?
Be done at, in the CWSRF for you.
I told them they would be on at eleven and now it's twelve.
Very big document. So I wanna warn you, it's, you know, three hundred pages if I remember correctly, and it was included as part of, part of the RFQ. But I have working knowledge of it because I prepared that report. So we can sit down anytime. Okay?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, for Tuesday. So I'm just trying to, we did an initial kind of overview of the, of the plant and the location of the district, map and plan questions with respect to costs and, you know, formation, district formation would be the next one. Is that, just wanna make sure everybody's on board with.
We can remind everybody if it comes up.
Yeah.
We're not gonna talk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I won't be here.
We'll, we'll remind them that if it comes up.
Yeah, that's just mostly about the SECR and the placement and the injection well versus the leaching pool and the effluent and all that.
If you have any questions about the SECR, you can just leave a poll.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
I was just talking about this.
No, not at all.
I wrote, they're gonna send a letter to announce our.
We are still ending, we're still waiting on that, but when we called them and said, can we publish the map and report? They said, you can rely on the fact that you're listed on that IUP as your guy.
That's an assurance of.
Yeah. So. The next item. Oh, no, thank you. You can come up and sit here.
I'm not here.
Mine too. Sorry, we'll try to make the next presentation a little quicker and, um, mindful of your time. Um, this is another whole leftover thing from the previous administration, but, um, it is, it is a great project. And that is that we have Ramble who did our climate action plan, but they're not our consultant. They're the consultant to NYSERDA. And, but the town entered into a contractual agreement with NYSERDA to allow NYSERDA to do, um.
Is this your phone?
Yes, I say, to not, allow them to do a planning study with us together on, um, this Peker plant that's on two eighty David White's Lane. This Peker plant is going to be decommissioned within probably five years' time. And so our, this, this program called Just Transition, which they will discuss, is to look at, it's a planning study about re, adaptive reuse of this property. So I'd like to introduce to you, our, the team from Ramble. Emery, do you wanna introduce everyone on your end? This is Emery Lee.
Yeah, hi, James Janice, um, and hello everyone.
Yeah, hi, James Janice, and hello everyone. It's good to see some of you again and then some of the stakeholders and on the town board. We're gonna share our screen here, can you all see this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great, so we'll walk you through the step, but first off, my name's Emery Lee, I am from Ramble. As you obviously mentioned, we're working with the town and with NYSERTA on the Just Transition Program. My background is in city and regional planning and climate adaptation and resilience as well as sustainability planning. And I'm joined here by my colleagues Shelby Smith and Simon Case. And I can, I can let you them give a short intro about their backgrounds as well. And then we'll dive into the depth where I can explain a bit more about the NYSERTA Just Transition Program and the project that we're working on with the town of Southampton. So, welcome.
Yeah, thanks to you all and these folks again, my name's Shelby Smith, senior resilient chief planner here at Ramble, working out of the New York City office. Similar background, Emery, she'll specialize in resilient design, sustainability, and every site solutions as well.
Hi, everyone, I'm Simon Case, I'm an urban planner, working primarily on climate adaptation and resilience projects. And I've been working in New York State on community planning, economic development, and other building support for the city.
Great, and then we have an image here of Gabriella Veku, who is the NYSERTA project manager for this program. I believe Gabby is also supporting another Just Transition Program, her project that's happening in the town of East Hampton as well. So Gabby is familiar, she's a commie, she's a commie. And, yeah, we can, we can talk a little bit about NYSERTA Just Transition Program. Unfortunately, Gabby wasn't able to play today, but she will be, you know, an active participant in as we progress. So, let's talk a little bit about.
Excuse me?
Oh, yes, can you hear us okay?
No.
No.
We can, I think it just can Kevin increase the volume on our end, it's not necessarily.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, sure, and if you'd like me to repeat anything, maybe that, that didn't come through there, just feel free to ask, I'm happy to.
Hey, Janice, who owns this property right now?
Nice, National Grid.
National Grid.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the Just Transition Program, by and large, is, again, as we mentioned, a program run by NYSERTA. So it's the state's planning initiative to assist communities with transitioning away from reliance on fossil fuels as per the CLCPA, the Climate Leadership and Fueling Protection Act. And specifically, the program's objectives are to provide funds to communities, so municipalities, throughout New York State to perform planning studies. And, you know, those planning studies ideally would help inform future decision making regarding fossil fuel generating facilities located within the jurisdictions of municipalities, again, across the state. And, you know, just the planning component of it is an important one and it's, you know, also to help mitigate potential negative impacts of future facility closures or closures, or whether that's on workforce development or on, you know, whether there are fiscal impacts, you know, to the, the sort of tax base of a municipality. And, you know, I think the goal is to also just try to capitalize on the synergies between, you know, the transition to a more clean energy driven economy and, you know, create engines of economic development in the process. So that's sort of, I would say, broad strokes, the programmatic goals. And if you want to hop to the next slide, Shelby, I can talk a little bit about how that sort of dovetails with, I think, I think you're being.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
The, the goals of the Just Transition Program align well with the town of Southampton's climate commitments and sort of actions to date. And just a note that the towns can elect to participate in this program, it's completely voluntary and there's no requirement from NYSERTA to close any facilities or decommission facilities. It's mainly just a planning study. So, you know, it's, it's a way for a town to envision what, you know, potential uses of sites might be in the, in the, you know, near or distant future, if they are no longer operating as fossil fuel generation facilities. So, you know, I think you all are probably, you know, pretty familiar with the town of Southampton's record when it comes to climate actions and clean energy. The town's actually done quite a bit over the last decade and, you know, prior to. The town's a leader in the NYSERTA Community Program through, you know, adopting the stress code and, you know, high impact actions like converting the street lights already. I mean, participating in the US DOE Better Climate Challenge in twenty thirteen, adopting the Southampton four hundred Sustainability Element to the comprehensive plan and adopting a climate action plan to guide the town on its journey toward achieving carbon neutrality and reducing greenhouse gas emissions generally. And the town's also a member of the New York State Climate Smart Communities Program, so just quite a legacy to build on here and a very clear commitment in the eyes of the state to becoming a cleaner, greener municipality. So, with that, I will, Shelby, who can kind of watch you through just the overview of the project and, you know, find out what the scope essentially entails.
Great, yeah, thanks, Emery. So, so with all those climate commitments in mind, the town of Southampton, really in partnership with NYSERTA and Ramble, will perform this Just Transition type reuse planning studies with the aim of assessing, as Emery noted, potential future reuses for the site if and when the site is decommissioned. So the scope here includes existing conditions analysis, including a phase one ESA. So we'll be kind of taking a closer look at the site, seeing if there's any environmental impact that we should be aware of that might, you know, inform what these future reuses might be. We'll have a community outreach and engagement, which Simon will speak to in a bit more detail in a couple slides, as well as a alternative reuse and economic analysis to kind of evaluate potential, again, these potential reuses and what those financial and financial impacts could be, in addition to looking at the kind of possible economic impact of decommissioning kind of at large. And then ultimately, the deliverable of this effort will be a site reuse plan, which will include sort of recommended actions and proposed timeline for between three and four possible reuse scenarios. So we won't be, you know, saddling on one option, we'll be kind of keeping a few different, you know, high value scenarios in, in, in place here. So, then about the site we're actually evaluating, as noted, it is located at two eighty David White Lane and it's a natural grid generation facility, located kind of right on the, the north side of the LIR tract that I set the town of Southampton in the village. The plant is currently operational and it's what we call a peaker plant, which means the site's power based off electrical demand. Especially, it primarily operates around two hundred hours a year during hot summer days to meet that elevated cooling demand. So it's not running year round, it's kind of used just to meet for the high, high demand. And it's, the parcel itself is a little less than nine acres, it's a zone for light industrial. And I just want to note throughout our alternative reuse analysis, that we'll really primarily be focusing on reuse options that are in line with, with the current zoning, so without light industrial.
Can they maybe sit closer to their microphones?
Shelby, can you just sit a little closer to the mic, just because some others on Zoom saying they have part time hearing? Thank you.
Sure, no problem, should I repeat anything?
No, you're good.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have to chat over here too. So just looking at the project timeline here, this is a fall month project. You know, we're, we're kind of at the end of January, so on month five here. As you can see, really, our, our primary focus up until this point has been kind of the existing conditions analysis. We're, we're just kind of wrapping up the phase one ESA now. And that's all really the lay of groundwork for what's to come in, in the following months. So, kind of turning our focus to the stakeholder engagement piece. We have been conducting some, some interviews with town staff and forming a steering committee, really to act as a basis for kind of a, a strong community engagement with potentially two public workshops in the spring and summer. And we'll, beginning in February, start our alternative reuse and economic analysis. So, based on sort of the findings of the site and, and conversations and, and kind of what we're hearing from the community, start working towards those three to four reuse options. And then we'll be looking to finalize the project in August of this year, which as I noted, will conclude with a site reuse planning study report with, with the site reuse options, recommended timeline, and kind of all the findings from our prior staff.
When this plant goes away, what will the community want?
So with that, if there's a question, we can pause for a minute.
You voted on a contract.
Yeah, okay. So with that, I'll hand off to Simon to, a little hard detail about the stakeholder engagement.
What's the contract include?
Hang on a second. One moment, I just want to just, like, go back to a second here. They're, just rewind from the beginning.
I can't hear this conversation, I'm good with that.
They're just asking, like, how is this happening? And I'm, I don't have the resolution in front of me, but the town board, previous town board, Cindy, Tom John, you may remember this. You engaged in a contract with NYSERTA to say we would participate. NYSERTA pays Ramble, they are, they're consultant, we work together with them. We've identified, and I was gonna get to this part, some people we believe should be on a steering committee, it's up to you. If you want other people, additional people, and also to identify how you want that public engagement to go and ensure that it goes the way that you want. So I just wanna, so there is a, a contract between the town and NYSERTA that is why they're working on it.
So if this is decommissioned, this will most likely become, they'll sell this property.
Right, they want to, they, then, so they're gonna talk about this, but the idea is a planning study, like any comp plan study, shows, like, what do you want to see here? What do the people around it want to see here? What do we want to happen here? Do we want, you know?
It's LI forty, right?
Yeah, do we want an LI forty subdivision? Do we, we've heard in the paper and talk of the village wanting it for sewage treatment. We've heard, you know, NYSERTA saying, well, maybe we'll keep some of it and put solar on it. Like, so the question is, like, they'll come up to three to four scenarios under LI forty as a basis for when it does get decommissioned, you know, we'll have some sense of like what's gonna happen. Nobody's committing to anything here, it's just that you are having basically a free planning study being done.
Right, with, with a phase one seeker that's being done.
Environmental site testing is being done too, to make sure.
Which, which in my mind indicates test, test borings.
Yep, and they'll get into that.
Right, okay. Because we're, because we're, as you know, we're in desperate need of LI forty east of the canal and our tradespeople are trying to figure out ways to put LI forty in highway business and we're telling them no, so this is like a top prainer to me.
Well, and then you could say, well, one of our scenarios, and maybe the high level first one is LI forty suburbs.
Leave it the way it is.
Leave it, and let it be LI forty. Another option is, as you've heard, of which we know that the adjacent property owners don't want, is.
STP.
STP, so that's a second option. What's a third option and a fourth option, they'll do up to four different scenarios and then that's basically their task and that's it.
Good.
So, sorry, Shelby, just wanted to, there was like a lot of questioning under what you were saying and we weren't able to focus on it, so, yeah.
And the village found it as. One thing I wanted to just clarify for the, for the phase one, it's just an environmental health assessment and it actually won't, it doesn't entail any borings or testing or anything like that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to let you guys know so they can know exactly what's happening.
That will have to happen at some point, but.
And National Grid, who owns the property, is in partnership with us. They know this is happening, they met them on the site, they're part of this whole process, they are at the table. So they're not, we're not doing this and then pushing something onto them, they're part of this partner, they're a partner in this process.
They're paying for it.
NYSERTA is paying for it, National Grid owns the property, they're the peaker plant operator.
Exactly, and that's correct, Janice, and so speaking of partnership and just, you know, bringing people to the table, maybe this is a good point for you to sign and jump in and talk about, just give approach to stakeholder outreach and engagement. Because this is very important to NYSERTA, you know, it's important to the town as well, so wanted to just hop through a few slides on that.
Yeah, and, and, and Janice, thank you for, for, for that, that, that background. It's, it's so important and, and some of the comments that because we're here and, and, and obviously everyone here throughout the process are critical for us to make sure that this is a, a planning study that is gonna be useful for the town that reflects the town board's priorities and also reflects community priorities. And to that end, we see an outline here of, of some of the community engagement, uh, uh, strategies and, and events that we have planned. These are in our contract with NYSERTA, so these are gonna happen. Public workshops that, that we saw on the, on the timeline, the steering committee, I've been, just talked about. We've talked a bit about stakeholder interviews, town staff with the village, they're right across, right across property boundaries to the south. National Grid, so important, right, they're the property owner, so we need to, we need to know what their plans are so that the outcome of this reflects that, that reality. Not that it's gonna be, you know, change hands tomorrow, but that, but that the, that we've got a reasonable timeline in terms of what their, what their plans are for their, for their property. There's also gonna be a, a community survey coming up and, and a web page for people to, to keep an eye on what we're working on. And, and the, the key emphasis here for us is, is first of all, we're so appreciative to be meeting with you today, to hear your initial thoughts on this. Hopefully this isn't the last time that we're able to meet with you and get your input, because ultimately, the, the board is the one who's, who's gonna, you know, you know, be in, be in control of this on, on the town side. But, but also, you know, Shelby talked about the, the outcome being three to four, three to four scenarios. Janice just talked about some of the things that are, the sort of concepts that might be out there in the air. We don't bring to this any prebaked notion of what the site should be. We, we, we've gotta hear from you, from, from other stakeholders, from members of the community, to, to understand what the priorities are and hopefully as part of that process, bring forward some ideas that you, you know, so that you can also hear what, what the community is saying about this and, and provide that, provide that, that background of information for you all as well.
Wait.
So, the engagement piece of this is, is super important for us to make sure that, that, that we're on the right track and we're providing a feasibility or kind of study for you that's gonna be, that's, that's gonna look like the right type of.
Are we?
Could we, could we just, we have a, we have a question.
Couple of questions, go ahead.
We're gonna, are you saying we're asking the community what they want us to do, if they want us to change a zone here for this particular parcel?
No, it's just a reuse study, so you have three high level options, so you can say, there's a couple of, when, when a peaker power plant decommissions, NYSERTA has a whole process and PSC has a whole process around it, and that's this. It's called Just Transition. So the peaker plant can move to a renewable energies type of scenario if they want?
Like batteries?
Well, I don't know, you know, like solar, but maybe, yeah. But I'm not, you know, we obviously have a moratorium and we're not, you know, getting into that.
Yeah.
But a renewable energy option is, is certainly something that National Grid might want to do in lieu of this peaker plant. They could do that in LI forty today, under that zoning. Whether or not you want them to is the question. So it's sort of like, it's just a.
So they're not, so they were saying, leave it in that zone.
We're not saying it, yeah, they said in the beginning slide, they're assuming, keeping it LI forty.
Oh, okay.
And so you can chop up LI forty into little forty thousand square foot lots and make it like Mariner Drive across the way. You could have subdivided maybe and let NYSERTA do, I mean, National Grid have solar or some other renewable something and then maybe use the other piece for some other LI purpose.
How many acres is this?
It's almost nine acres. So they're saying, they're not coming in here with a preconceived, prebaked notion. But we know those are two obvious things, because we've talked about them, so that's why I'm mentioning them. But the idea is that you'll get three to four scenarios, so you, it's basically, this whole process is for. So you, it's basically, this whole process is for the community to know the fate of a very large piece of property that is no longer going to be for a fossil fuel peaker plant.
And this is, they always do this kind of thing when they decommission.
Yeah, yep, and so we're engaged in this process that we don't even have, it's not, we're not paying for it, but we are working in partnership with them because it's a planning study in our town.
So we can have some input on it.
Of course you have input on it, you have all the input in the law. So, and the people around it have input, and the whole idea is, this process is set up because sometimes in other communities, let's say upstate or somewhere, that's the source of income. That's people's jobs, like, it's like coal mining going away. Like, what happens? How do you transition? What happens? So this process is set up around that type of thing, and then, you know, this is why we're doing this, because here's a fossil fuel plant going away, and they ensure that the community knows how, and that's why they said they do a fiscal analysis, what, what jobs are lost, what jobs could be gained? How, you know, and that's like this transition from like a coal-based fossil fuel world to a renewable world. This is kind of like the, the planning and process behind it.
And the village of Southampton is going to be involved.
The village of Southampton is going to be involved, they ask, and I don't know if you want to jump to like who they, they asked that Paul Travis be, um, part of it, like then, from their behalf. We can ask them to appoint someone specifically. We have a couple of people in mind that we've had, you know, reached out to, namely.
In terms of what?
Like in the stakeholder, like you need a steering committee of community people. So part, the process has a very specific way about it. Where we get some stakeholders, we get, which is National Grid, the Planning Department, the Town Board. You know, these are our stakeholders. Then we get some community people on a committee, um, which we would like people in our renewable, you know, like I'm in green committee world, also like builders, you know, people involved. And then we, we steer this toward, you know, your three scenarios out of four that you're going to get.
So what kind of community outreach has been done already? Or if?
We haven't, this is a kickoff, basically. We can't start this, they've done some site assessments that they said in that little, um, time chart, uh, I'm sorry, Gantt chart. It was sort of like most of it.
But is National Grid selling this to a private developer or builder or?
National Grid is interested in either subdividing it and keeping half, or maybe if we showed them a lot, they're, they're open, let's put it that way.
How many smaller parcels could we get?
Well, that's what this whole study will bring out.
Will they talk about what their intent to use the other half is for?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So they're either, but they, you know, and they, and the village, and I, you know, to be fully transparent, we've seen it in the paper, we know they are looking for a site for sewage treatment plants. The village is interested.
I thought they found one.
This is one of the candidates. And another one is in the, is near the hospital. So there's two. Um, sorry, so any other questions about that?
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, this, this is really, this is really great, um, discussion from us here, so thank you for, thank you for that. Uh, so one more here, you know, where, as Janice said, we're, we're, even though we've done some of the existing conditions and some of that background analysis, we're still very early on in the process. And, and these are just some of the, the, the questions that we have, I would be getting to, uh, the, the, the thick of the announcement. You know, principally, what are the appropriate uses of, like, we've talked about a couple of them here today, but, but, but again, these are going to come out of the, the process and, um, uh, and, and end up being the, the bulk of the report that we finalized. The, the impact of closure, impact on energy, you know, impact on jobs, kids' school access, so on. Are important for us to understand, um, as a group. Um, community concerns and priorities, that's, that's why, why we have the robust community outreach program plan. Uh, constraints and opportunities really to be site alternatives, you know, there was a question about oil burning, right? So, you know, we're not doing that as part of our scriptwork, but the, the potential for contamination on the site is important to understand for, for, uh, for, for we can use alternative. So those are all, these, those are all some of the background, um, questions that, that we have. Um, you know, we're happy to, to, you know, think you're saying, we have a speech about, about these with you, you know, you're about to land here. Your agenda, but this is just the background for us of what we're, what we're thinking of. One last, one last thing before, before I turn it to Emery to wrap up, is I wanted to reinforce something that, um, that Janice just said. We, we, we are being paid by NYSERDA, but the, this is for the town, this isn't for NYSERDA, it's obviously not for, uh, for just the community here. So, so really, really take that to heart, this is for the US Town Board. That's why we're meeting with you today, and that's why I want to stay in touch with you throughout the process. We, we, we meet with Janice regularly. So it's, it's, I think it's an important framing for all of you guys to understand that this is, this is not for somebody else and, and you're, and you're a stakeholder, this is just yours.
Yeah, we applied for a grant and got it, and we were awarded the grant. So just so you know, we applied, we, the town, asked for it and got it. And that's how we, we are here, so it's not like they're.
Another grant, thank you.
What was the grant for?
It was for this just transition program. It was a grant opportunity that we applied for in the previous administration to do this, because we knew this plant was closing down.
Oh, I thought NYSERDA was paying for this.
They are, they are the grantee, we are the grantee, they are the grantor, and they're granting us planning services of Ramble. You, you know what I mean? Yeah.
Okay. Um, so yeah, just lastly, next step, uh, just wanted to run through those quickly with you all. Um, and then a- again, as I mentioned, we'd love to hear any, you know, uh, questions you have or responses to those driving questions that we just showed. Definitely curious about your initial thoughts. Um, but yeah, completing, uh, existing conditions analysis that we sort of already mentioned, and the, um, phase one ESA from site, um, completing stakeholder interviews. Um, we've, you know, as we discussed, had to discuss the list of stakeholders, um, but would love your input as well.
Thank you.
If there are other, you know, ideas you have about, you know, uh, people who should be part of the steering committee or participate in stakeholder interviews, um, you know, we would love that input and feedback. Publishing the project website, webpage, the information will live on the town's website. So we have, uh, information about the project ready to go, um, but we wanted to meet with you all and to orient the town board to this work, and also just, um, you know, again, get an initial sort of response from you all and initial ideas that we can then hold into what we're doing now and, you know, um, if we're ready to put that, you know, webpage live. Um, you know, to be reflective of, you know, everyone's best and current thinking. And then, um, you know, subsequent to today, we'll be, um, beginning work accordingly, the first public workshop and release the community survey in the coming month. So that's sort of, um, what we're looking at now. Uh, and yeah, um, just to echo with Simon, and we're so grateful for your time today, the opportunity to meet with you all as we begin the work, and, um, yeah, thank you so much. And, uh, please, if you have any, uh, you know, initial thoughts, responses, reactions, we're very appreciative. So thank you.
When, when do you need the, uh, recommendations for the, the stakeholder or steering committee?
We, um, have identified some people, and I can name them off to you now, and you can, uh, think about others.
How many are, how many would be?
Why don't you just submit them rather than saying them publicly in case they want to change it in any way?
That sounds good.
Yeah, what constitutes a committee, how many?
It could be up to, I think, seven, seven people outside of like staff. You know, so, um, we think, you know, some, obviously, that doesn't include, um, we, the stakeholders of the community that's directly, uh, south would be a, a, you know, they could either participate on the committee, or they could be a separate group that we meet with.
One of the neighbors.
That's what I mean, the neighbors.
Yeah.
Um, the neighbors, but they're, you know, uh, there's some people that, you know, I would recommend that live in this vicinity that would be, you know, willing. There's also, you know, people that we want to, ask may not have the time or capacity to participate. So we want to be sure that those that we ask are willing and able to, uh, join us. And then when we have that all settled, um, we'll move forward with, you know, sort of the stakeholder engagements, uh, workshop. Right, Emery, that would be the next step here after the website is the workshop. Can you go back to that little, uh, the one slide of the timeframe, if you would?
Yeah, we'll bring that up. Uh, right, yes, um, so, yeah, the, the, I guess, next big sort of stakeholder event is the first public workshop. And in parallel with planning for that will also be, um, planning to issue a community survey, which I believe, um, uh, we can also do and probably post on the, the project webpage. That's going to live on the town's website as well. So, um, we'll be devising a list of questions, circulating those with the stakeholders, steering committee, and you as well, Janice. But yes, that would be something that would be pretty accessible digitally, folks could access, issue their responses to. And, uh, then we're targeting right now, March twenty twenty-four, for the first public workshop. And that's, that's sort of where we are right now at the moment.
Great, so that'll be the next step. Um, we'll circulate some committee member recommendations, get your feedback on that, and.
Get on the calendar for March?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, all.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, sorry that took a while.
That's okay.
Important stuff.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, I know.
Good for the community.
I mean, I might have a question for you on the agenda.
How come, is it later or?
No, I think we're doing it right now.
Okay, I'll just be right back.
Unless everybody wants to take a little break.
Well, I mean, I think Sunday's has somewhere else she needs to be.
Oh, Sunday's, right, okay. Did it let her know we're coming up, she needs to come up, or does she know that?
She knows. You called Sunday, right?
Yes, Sunday and the drive to the bus station.
Oh, God. Gumbling.
You know, the Zoom people are watching us watch this instead of watching this. If that wasn't what we shared on Zoom, that's why we couldn't hear. Doesn't make sense to me.
I told somebody she didn't want to be talking.
I have.
It's the portal stuff.
Hard to know what's in the ground.
I know.
Watching us watch them.
Were we in the big screen and not the little screen?
Correct. Yeah.
Oh, Kevin's name, so that's all stuff that we can.
I did know she did. Yeah.
Oh, okay, as long as you.
History, that's a good idea.
Yes.
Oh, it is?
Oh, and they walked on, not walk, added on a replacement.
I don't have a copy.
Did everybody get that replacement?
Do you guys have a cup of replacement for the electrical?
Oh, I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's not it.
I put it on your desk.
That's the one. Yes.
Finally.
Lot of trees here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I guess the best way is this way you used to do, is just read them off if you're the sponsor, and then if anybody has a question, just chirp in. So, uh, two public hearings, we're going to continue with the Community Housing Fund, and then have the hearing on the fruicide sewage treatment plant. The first, uh, resolution for the, for the, um, to amend the Department of Land Management building and zoning and electrical permit fees is being withdrawn.
Service motion four five three two nine is authorized to push a taxi seven wheeler loader for, from all iron equipment.
Okay.
For the highway.
Four five two three two to authorize the purchase of safety shoes from Suffolk County Contract with Safeguard Safety Shoe Company.
Four five three three four, authorized push of two, twenty twenty four, come with T four eighty dump plow, speder trucks from Cabella Truck Sales, it's for the highway.
Okay. Uh, four five two eight two, authorize the purchase of, from HO Penn Machinery Company, Inc. for generator emergency service repair and parts using Suffolk County Contract. And four five two nine six to authorize the purchases from WB Mason using Suffolk County and Eastern Suffolk Bosse's contracts.
Four five three two two, authorized purchase of Ford automotive parts and supplies from Sourcewell Contract with Ford Motor Company. Four five three two zero, authorized purchase of General Motors Chevrolet Chrysler Dodge and Ford OE, OEM repairs and parts from E Bosse Contract from TNT Borwin Automotive. And DCL Motor Eagle and Eagle Chevrolet of Riverhead. Um, four five two eight nine, authorized purchase of groundkeeping repair parts and service accessories from Suffolk County Contract with Malvee's Equipment. Four five, four five two eight four, authorized purchase of heavy duty parts stolen Mack Ford Kenworth Peterbilt International from Gaberell Truck Sales in Sasa, New York, truck sales and trucks using Suffolk County Contracts.
Four five two nine five, authorized purchases of industrial and commercial equipment and supplies from Choice Distribution, Inc. Fastenal Company HD Supply Facilities Maintenance Limited, Home Depot USA, Inc., Lawson Products, Inc., and WW Granger, Inc. using Suffolk County Contracts.
Four five two two three, authorized purchase of supply and delivery of auto parts with Advanced Store Company and DBA Advanced Auto Parts Grade Petroleum Fleet Pride, Inc., and Morgan Auto Supply and using East Hampton Contract.
Uh, four five three two five, authorized purchases of water meters and accessory equipment from Core and Main LP using the Town of Riverhead Contract. Four five three oh nine, authorized supervisor to sign twenty twenty four contract with Suffolk County Office for the Aging to receive additional senior citizen nutrition program funding.
Four five.
Could I be a co-sponsor to that?
Sure. Four five two eight seven, authorized supervisor to sign contract extension for roll-off containers with Monmit Solutions, Inc.
Four five three four oh.
I think Councilman's given me. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have to do that one first.
Go ahead, yeah.
Authorized supervisor to sign contract extended with United Metro Energy Corp. for alter load diesel fuel.
Town Board Resolution four five three seven four, authorized purchase of ParaPlan Desktop System from Passio Technologies to assist the scheduling of bus services provided by Senior Services.
Four five three zero zero, authorized purchase gasoline from New York State OGS Contract with Spagano Operation Resource LLC. Four five two nine three, authorized purchase of tire, passenger cars and light, medium and heavy duty trucks or forward equipment from Suffolk County Contracts with Barrel House of Tires.
Four five two nine nine, authorized supervisor to execute twenty twenty four youth bureau agreements with Youth Bureau Programming Consultants.
I'll also co-sponsor that.
That's our inter, internal program.
Yeah.
Four five two seven four, authorized supervisor to execute a contract with Edward Wolfers Dorf to assist with the review of backlog building permit plans in the Department of Land Management.
Sunday, could you add me to that one?
Four five three three two, authorized supervisor to execute an agreement with Fire Protection Service Corporation, DBA Brisco Protective LLC for burglar temperature alarm monitoring parts and labor services at one sixteen Hampton Road Town Hall Data Processing Center.
Four five three three one, authorized supervisor to execute an agreement with Fire Protection Services Corporation, DBA as Brisco Protective LLC for monitoring and maintenance of burglar system alarm at five eighty-five Bridge Hampton Seg Harbor Turnpike, Bridge Hampton Community Center. Center.
Okay, so four five three two eight is to authorize the supervisor to execute an amended professional services contract with Savick and Murray for construction administration at the West Hampton Community Center. And I would like to have the opportunity to look into and discuss this further. There's some other um resolutions to follow regarding the community center. Can I just like to give this board the opportunity to talk about?
So we could table this?
The details. Yes.
So you want to table?
Unless there's any negative implication from doing that, but I think we should.
I'm fine.
Town Board Resolution four five three nine zero authorized supervisor to execute any and all documents for the Federal Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification. Town Board Resolution four five three five three authorized supervisor to execute any and all documents related to agreement with Telview Corporation to continue to provide software support and software maintenance for South Hampton Sun Twenty TV.
Four five three two nine authorized supervisor to renew contract with C P F Appraisal Service.
Four five three one seven authorized supervisor to sign a one-year contract with hatch for maintenance parts and labor for the Hampton Bay's Water District.
Town Board Resolution number four four eight zero one authorized supervisor to sign an agreement Municipal Valuation Services, Inc. with FKA Michael Haberman Associates for small claim valuation and processing services.
Block five three five two authorized supervisor sign extended contract with L K McLean Associate P C for professional service to provide for the L Y Creek Habitat Exchange of Project, Encantment Project.
Four five two six nine. This is the award and authorize the supervisor to execute contract A general construction for the West Hampton Community Center with Norco Construction. And I would like to table that for further discussion.
And just so we're clear, if the um if there are answers that you can go ahead with some of these as opposed to others, you'll keep them on the agenda on Tuesday and the ones that you're not, that you won't, you'll table. Is that fair?
Okay, so we're not withdrawing them right now.
Right, right.
We're just trying to get some answers before Tuesday.
That's an option in during the track review, but.
We're not, I think further information is needed right now.
Not gonna, I'm sure we're not gonna be able to get answers by Tuesday.
I just want to check with contracts to make sure if the passer says, like, some of them might be passed up for payment.
Oh, okay. All right, that's a good point. Thank you.
Then if we could take them off, it'd be it'd be better to um instead of table it because if we put it on, then people's gonna wanna know why we tabled it.
Yeah, so we'll just see if anything has to get paid.
Yeah.
I'll check when we, I'll go check.
And we can make that decision, I guess, on Tuesday.
Mark?
Christine, I think they're brand new contracts.
They are brand new?
Yeah.
Okay, so they probably can be.
We just issued our piece.
Okay, so then they can.
Right, they're they're mine.
Okay.
So would we?
And Janice, Jim will come. Nick is gonna be on.
With some of them?
He can tell you.
Yeah, okay.
Four five two seven oh award and authorize the supervisor to execute contract B H back construction for the West Hampton Community Center with intricate tech solutions limited. I'd like to table that for the same reasons. And four five two seven one award and authorize the supervisor to execute contract C electrical and fire alarm construction for the West Hampton Community Center with R and J Industries Limited. Table please.
So, Sunday, if we want these basically withdrawn before you add, before you put out the final agenda, so they're not on the agenda, when do you need to know by?
Right now.
Well, it holds up, yeah. But this is, this isn't gonna go out until to the public till tomorrow anyway because of the.
So by end of business today?
Doing this.
By end of business today, you would need to know.
I need to understand that all of, you know.
All of us want to withdraw.
Cause a lot of these, there's several different sponsors on, which is kind of new. It's not just one or two people or one sponsor giving direction. Now you have three or four people on this, so I need to.
Well, these are all just my sponsorship.
These are, okay. So, you know, then you just need to send me an email. I need it in writing.
So we should basically, we should know after, after we have this next part of our work session, what we're doing with this.
Yeah, we can hold, hold for that, absolutely. I mean, at this point, it's, you know, it's not going anywhere.
And we do have the option on Tuesday to table it for two weeks?
Yes.
Or pass it if we so choose.
Well, we'll not have a Monday agenda at all.
If we know by end of work session.
Was the first part that we discussed.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Uh four five two seven two award and authorize the supervisor to execute contract D plumbing construction for the West Hampton Community Center with W H M Plumbing and Heating Contractors. So we either table or withdraw. And last plea, four five two seven three award and authorize the supervisor to execute contract E fire suppression system construction for the West Hampton Community Center with W H M Plumbing and Heating Contractors. Table or withdraw.
I'm sure, Tom and Dorothy, you can actually make it clear on this too. We've already bonded for this. We we already borrowed.
Harry, please.
Yeah, we already bonded this money.
Bonded.
It's already set aside for this project.
Yeah, it's gonna put out the bits, so those are the little bits that you want.
Four five three five four recall amend two oh two three dash one four four five authorized supervisor to sign contract with with L K McLean Associate P C Professional Engineer Service for Yar Club Drive Vault Vault replacement.
Four five three four three twenty twenty four notice to bidders for annual on-call granular activated carbon.
Four five three one zero twenty twenty four notice to proposers for professional services for the design of a constructive wetland in Riverside.
I'd like to be added to that, Sunday.
This was the one, Janice, I just had a question about. I thought, and this, I'm sure it's.
Yeah, that, okay.
Not the way I'm looking at it, but I thought we purchased that property for using, is this the same one for the constructed wetlands? Then we found out we couldn't use that for the sewer treatment plant. But now what is happening? So what has happened? And I'll just point it out if you don't mind on the map here. This is the sewage treatment. And this is up in here where we said, okay, if we put a pipe and we can discharge the effluent, that was one of the actions in secret analysis. So it was onsite, onsite in a deep injection well or offsite across the way up to here. D E C doesn't like this. They don't want us to do that. But we, at the same time, we, when the town board purchased it, they knew this was part of a larger complex of open space. So all that was ever gonna happen was we were basically watering the plants, right?
Is that by bid out? Like, what piece is that? Like, how do we purchase that?
This is all the way up by by iron point almost, like.
How do we, you know how we purchased it? Or was it like?
Water quality.
Water quality C P A.
So we always knew that if the sewage treatment plant is tertiary treatment so that it's lower than drinking water standards, and we were talking about piping it over here, doing a constructed wetland and watering it with the effluent. D E C didn't want us to do it that way, whatever. We're now staying onsite. At the same time, P E P got awarded all this grant money also from the.
Paconic Gastrology.
From the um Paconic Gastrology Partnership.
Partnership, sorry.
Uh they were awarded money from bipartisan infrastructure law and especially in this area. So they said, we can um pay for you to do a concept plan, not to put it in, just a concept plan. Let's say it was back on the table. We would still be able to, you know, water it with the effluents, but but the whole thing is just what plants would go there. And that's what they're paying for, a concept plan.
And and Janice, if memory serves.
And there's all dredge material. Just one quick point.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
All this was dredged and placed here. So the idea is to kinda. It's already been dredged?
Years ago, legacy.
Yeah, it was a oil site.
Long ago. This was a dredge material site. We're probably not gonna remove anything because it's almost like self-heal. It's almost coming back. But the idea is, how do we augment it? Because it is just like, if you look at an arrow, it's just a big pile of sand.
Yeah, it has to be flattened out.
Yeah, and it needs to be, and then like the idea of like grading it because in a wetland world, the elevation that you're at will, is what plants will fry.
It determines.
In addition to how long it's inundated by water and the period title site.
You want some swells in it.
Yeah. So the, so what they're paying for is a concept plan. And we have rules that we have to abide by, which one of them is to go out to bid for someone to, you know, come in with a concept plan. So that's what that is.
So, Janice, I'd like to point out here that a lot of the navigable channels of the Paconic River, when they were dredged, the spoils were put on the Southampton Town side. And so now we're dealing with it. And this is just one parcel with dredge spoils, including the park that we're gonna be building on. A lot of that is dredge spoils as well.
It's a wetlands restoration project.
Yeah, but we're not actually doing the restoration yet. It's really just the concept plan of what that restoration would look like.
Get this down.
Does that answer your question, supervisor?
Yes.
Okay.
Sometimes when you dredge, though, it's boggy and nothing's gonna grow in it. It's, we're gonna have to. Yeah, they're gonna do like some sediment tests and see what they have to do and come up with like a plant concept. That's part of this. Um, I don't know that the testing is part of it. It's just really like what plants. But I do think there will be some site assessments. So I'll ask them that when we, when we meet with them again. Thank you.
Santa Field, I went there a while ago.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'd like everyone just to know where the dredge spoil came from.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'd be co-sponsor with that too, Sunday.
For the history.
Sunday.
All right, so the next twenty-nine, I think, resolutions are for the bond, our bond resolutions. And um I'm sponsoring all of them. So I'm gonna read them. But um I know that most of them have been authorized under the twenty twenty-four capital budget with the expect section of the special districts. But um I think that the board, there's a few projects that we'll, maybe we'll hear from today that um that the board might not wanna go through with. But I've been informed by our comptroller that we can authorize the bonds and, but we're not going to actually borrow the money till later in the year. So if it does so happen that we don't go forward with a particular project, we're just not borrowing the money for that project. Just to give us a little more time to discuss them, but not hold up, you know, the comptroller's office because you get a preferred rate on the bonds the earlier you apply. Is that accurate?
Right. And the departments can't spend the money until, the department won't be able to spend the money until the bond resolution is in place. So um if we do not wanna go forward with a project, then we're gonna have to do another resolution just to either reduce the project, abandon, whatever you wanna do at that time.
But we want to borrow.
Correct.
Yeah, we can do that after.
Right now it's just the authorization. We're not actually borrowing the money. We plan on doing that later on in the year.
Okay. I mean, it would be nice if we had had the opportunity, but this just timing didn't work out that way.
Right, especially for the projects that you do wanna go for, you know, forthwith. So if um, you know, once we have the bond resolutions, we, the departments can start spending money on the projects. We don't have to actually bond the money. But at that point, we have the authorization.
Oh, um, okay. But we don't want them to go and spend money on some of the projects that we might have a concern about.
Right. So we will, first of all, they're gonna be already on, you know, they'll know that you are questioning the project and that there would have to be a follow-up resolution.
And some, and some of these projects we've already bonded for, we've already borrowed money for.
Correct, correct. Like the West Hampton Community Center. That funding is already set aside. But not all of them. And as you know, many times we um do a portion of funding every year because sometimes those projects are large enough.
Like, we're gonna talk about it, but like the bike lane has grants associated with it. So there's, there's a bunch of different.
Correct, yes. I mean, we can go through, I mean, there's twenty-nine of them, so I don't think you wanna ask every, each project, but maybe the ones and.
Maybe individually you can meet after if you have questions. And between now and Tuesday, you can kind of.
Cause I think some of us are familiar, more familiar with some of them.
Yes, definitely. And there's only a few that I had some questions about.
And I appreciate the board's due diligence in that respect.
Thank you. All right, so we'll um just read them. We'll, you know.
Sure, and let me know if, sure.
Unless anyone has any questions.
And the town are here, so pertains to municipal works, they can definitely.
Once you've borrowed for it, though, I know you're, these, you're not gonna try to actually borrow the money until maybe the fall. But what happens with one that was already borrowed, that like the community center?
So those res- bond resolutions are specific to that particular project. So it can only be spent on West Hampton Community Center. If you abandon the project, then that money is put in a debt reserve. And every year, we use a portion of it to pay the debt on that borrowing. I think there were three borrowings for the West Hampton Community Center.
Oh, you just did. You have to, you just use the money to pay the debt back.
Right, instead of raising taxes or coming up, you know, for the debt payment, we just use every year allocate a portion of it to pay the debt.
I see, okay.
The purchase price of it.
For the debt amount. So if it's a twenty-year debt, then you, whatever you take divided by twenty, use that portion to offset the years.
But we're paying off debt that we borrowed that we're not using, so it's.
Correct.
Theoretically.
But you're also not raising taxes on it, you know.
But we are paying interest.
Oh, yes, because we already borrowed that money.
You couldn't, you make a prepayment.
Um, I think the bonds are callable. I have to look. Um, I think the lowest is like seven years. Some of them are ten years. So you can call the bond until, you know, seven or ten years.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, that's a consideration too.
Sure.
Thank you. All right. So do you think I should read each one of these? I guess I will. All right. Uh four five three six zero bond authorization for two hundred thousand for creation of bike lanes and construction of a multi-use path G G P. Uh four five three six two bond authorization of two hundred and thirty thousand for purchase installation and configuration of network equipment. So if you have any questions, say something. I have a more detailed description of them. Uh four five three six four is the bond resolution of three hundred thousand for improvement of Hampton Bay's Water District. Um four five three six six bond authorization of three hundred thousand for the purchase of police vehicles. Four five three six one bond authorization of three hundred and ten thousand for North Sea Beach Colony Beach Erosion Control District. And the Beach Erosion Control District bonds, my understanding that they, that gets paid through the tax, the special tax for those communities.
On the district.
All right, that's.
Sixty-two parcels.
Four five three six five bond authorization of five hundred thousand for improvement of Hampton Bay's Water District test boring at thirty-two Quail Run. Four five three five six bond authorization of three million seven hundred thousand for increase and improvement of the Hampton Bay's Water District facilities. Four five three five seven bond authorization of ten million five hundred thousand for Bridge Hampton Beach Erosion Control District. Four five three five eight bond authorization of ten million five hundred thousand for Sagaponix Beach Erosion Control District.
Tax pays that.
Tax payers pay.
People know that.
In the specific districts.
Yes.
Okay.
Four five three six three bond authorization of two hundred fifty thousand dollars for sidewalk and traffic improvements along Neuyak Road. Four five three five nine bond authorization of one hundred thousand dollars for pedestrian and traffic safety improvements. Four five three eight one bond authorization of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for purchase of self-contained fire and investigation response unit. Four five three eight eight bond authorization of two hundred thousand for reconstruction or rehabilitation of culverts. Four five three eight five bond authorization of three hundred thousand for reconstruction or rehabilitation of bulkheads. Four five four oh six bond authorization of four hundred thousand for construction or reconstruction of various town sidewalks. Four five three six seven bond authorization of four hundred and twenty thousand for improvements for various town-owned buildings. Four five three six eight bond authorization of five hundred thousand for expansion of town-owned police headquarters. Four five four one one bond authorization of five hundred thousand for the purchase of heavy equipment for waste management purposes. Four five four zero nine bond authorization of five hundred thousand for replacement of bulkheads and anchorage system. Four five four zero two bond authorization of five hundred thousand for various town-wide drainage improvements. Four five three six nine bond authorization of six hundred and twenty-five thousand for various improvements to the Lobster Inn Marina. Four five three eight two bond authorization of seven hundred thousand for upgrades to town-wide radio communication system. Four, five, three, eight, two, bond authorization of seven hundred thousand for upgrades to town-wide radio communication system. Four, five, three, seven, zero, bond authorization of seven hundred and fifty thousand for elevation and structural improvements to Town Hall. Four, five, four, zero, five, bond authorization of one million dollars for the acquisition of road maintenance vehicles and related equipment. Four, five, four, one, zero, bond authorization of one million dollars for construction of a new replacement bridge at Jove's Lane. Four, five, three, eight, zero, bond authorization of one million dollars for construction of Shinnecock Hills Limited Access Road. Four, five, three, seven, six, bond authorization of one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for improvements to the Shinnecock Commercial Dock. And four, five, four, zero, four, bond authorization of one million four hundred and fifteen thousand for the reconstruction of town roads. Four, five, three, five, five, bond authorization for one million eight hundred and fifty thousand for improvements to various town parks, playgrounds, and recreational areas. And that's it for the bonds. Four, five, three, I'm sorry, four, five, four, one, three, amend the 2024 adopted budget for nutrition programs, part-time salaries. Revenue program.
Yeah, that's, that's to the county. She's getting her grant from the county for forty thousand dollars, so we increasing part-time salaries, so then she, we're going to get reimbursed for it. This is for shopping assistance, I believe, for the season.
Which we partner with part of the Hamptons on this.
We did, but I don't think that, we, we did last year, it didn't work. I think that's why we are trying to.
Hire somebody part-time.
Correct.
And that's what the grant money's going to be used for.
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, I'll co-sponsor.
Thank you. Four, five, three, three, five, amend the 2023 budget for various departments, I said fourth in the resolution. There's no financial impact to this, everything evens out. Uh, four, five, three, seven, two, authorize dispersment of light mitigation funds for Riverly, Riverly Avenue lighting installation.
Can I co-sponsor please? Sunday, thank you.
Town Board Resolution Number four, five, four, one, seven, to appoint Dark Skies Advisory Committee for 2024. I don't know what my fellow town board members think about this, but I, I know a couple of folks who are on this committee, one in which Joy Flynn, very wonderful person and, you know, great advocate for Dark Skies. Um, it's a very important issue for the protection of our nocturnal wildlife. Um, so I recognize the importance of this committee. However, I don't know if we've had a lot of time to go through some of the names on these committees and advisory boards. And I'm not sure if, if we could collectively come to a consensus that perhaps we should table this until we're all sort of in agreement on who we'd, who we'd like to see on some of these committees and boards.
Yeah, I'd like to table that, just because.
We can, we've also added people in the past, so, I know there are some new people on here. So generally what happens with these is we put them out to the committee and we ask if there is anybody that is on it currently that doesn't no longer want to be on it, or if there are people that have been coming to meetings regularly that would like to become members. And generally these go on after we get that feedback from the committee as to who wants to stay. I know, because I do see some new people on here. Um, and then you're free to during the year, if you want to add somebody or somebody wants to be removed.
Sure.
You can do that throughout the year.
I'm aware of the, the ability for us to do additions, but are, are you comfortable with just this going forward as is? Or should we, because I think there are other committees that we may want to review as far as.
It's your, it's, it's your committee and if you want to hold off on it, by all means, you, you can do that. I just, I would just explain to you how we usually do these.
Sure.
Because these people, like I've removed people from committees because they've just, for all year, have never seen the person at a, at a meeting. And then also we'll have people that'll come during the year that want to be on the committee. And these are all open to the public, anybody can come to these committee meetings. So it's very easy also to say, you know, just come and participate as a committee member, but they're there. And then if they choose to be added after a few meetings, you can always add them. That committee, it's hard to get people actually to, so I'm glad to see the numbers actually increased this year.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm definitely in, in agreement with the importance of, of the, the work of the committee. Um, and I certainly, um, I'm happy to hear also that there are additional members that have been added based on what the committee's deliberation has brought about. I just, I would, I think we, we haven't really as a board, except for an executive session, we've, we've, we've looked at some, some, some of the, some committees and boards. I'd like to have more time to review names on some of these committees and boards. Do, like, are, are we able to, and maybe this is a question for counsel, are we able to hold an exec session of reviewing the boards, who's on the boards, who's applied to the boards?
A lot of the discussion is had publicly, but when it comes to like specific people and you're talking about.
Right.
It's personnel-related.
Yeah.
Um, I will double check, but I believe that that would allow you to be able to have resumes and talk about personnel.
Yeah, I'd love, I'd love to throw it out to the board. What do we think about just holding a specific executive session of just all the boards and looking at the names on them?
That'd be a very good idea.
I, I don't think that's appropriate for executive session.
If it's person, to look at people's resumes.
If it's members of our, our community boards, let's have the liaison, you know, kind of reach out to folks and then, and then bring it to a town board meeting for a vote.
If we're looking at resumes for planning or, or appointed boards, that's, I think, appropriate.
That's what we're.
Right.
Yeah.
These, these folks aren't being hired as, you know, members of, of.
So the liaison has to get a lateral decision to?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
I'm not saying that at all, but, you know, uh, call these folks and see if they're interested. And if there are other people who've reached out to you, you know, put them on and, and, right? Right, counsel.
And as a rule.
As far as, there are very specific rules for executive session and determining who's on our boards.
I know personnel is covered, like I said, I would look into it further.
And is this considered personnel?
I'm not sure, I have to look into it distinguishing a committee from an advisory. They're both advisory, planning boards and zoning boards, you would be able to do that.
Because we actually look at resumes when we point them.
So they, they would be considered personnel or not, you have to look into.
They get paid.
But you just made a determination on a couple of boards, right?
I would have to look into.
Okay, so we don't have the.
Well, let's take.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to table it.
I, I agree with table, you know, if you want.
Just, I want to get clarification on that because I do think, you know, we have a decision to make to look at our committees and look at who is serving on them and make sure that we are comfortable with everything moving forward. Um, I think that that it's, it, we charge them to, with authorization to do the work of, of what we charge them to do. I think we have every right to, to, to do our due diligence in looking at all of our existing committees and those who sit on them and, and see if we want to continue to expand them, invite more people, because we do have resumes. I mean, I, I think, you know, just based on my recollection, I, I've, I've received tons of emails that have gone to all of us of potential candidates for various committees. And I just want to make sure those who have applied are on the resolution and we've done our thoughtful consideration of making sure we have, you know, placed all of those individuals who are interested on those committees.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I was going to have, get packets for everybody with all the resumes that we got for each of the appointed boards with a list of what the vacancies are and who's hold over or expired terms. And then we can, you know, decide what to do.
I think it's a reasonable request. I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to just have agreement with the town board.
What's the request to table this or withdraw?
Table, I think.
Well, you're the sponsor, so technically you could just remove it.
You could just remove it and put it back on when you're ready.
Yeah, it's however you want to proceed.
Because obviously you're not, you're not going to be ready by Tuesday.
Do you want to withdraw it for now or do you want to table?
Uh, let's, let's, let's withdraw until we, and, and let us also look into the possibility of holding an executive session on our committees and boards to review applicants to those, to those respective.
So I'm going to withdraw this on your behalf.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, uh, four, five, three, seven, eight, appoint Safety and Risk Management Committee for 2024. This one, I thought since it's internal people, I would let this one go and not withdraw it. Um, four, five, four, one, eight, accept retirement of Diane Carpenter, senior account clerk in the town attorney's office.
I'd like to co-sponsor that, Sunday, please.
Okay. Oh, four, five, three, two, one, accept resignation of Gary Latanzio, cook in the Housing and Community Services. Four, five, three, one, nine, terminate employee in the municipal works department. Four, five, three, three, six, appoint Christian Peterson to principal environmental analyst position in community preservation.
I'd like to co-sponsor that one too, please.
Four, five, three, eight, seven, appoint Kevin Sikla to water district maintenance crew leader in Hampton Bays Water District. Four, five, three, two, six, appoint Maria Espinales to senior police operations aide position in police department. Four, five, three, three, seven, appoint Matthew Palmieri to records management assistant position from civil service list. And four, five, three, two, seven, appoint Stephanie Orlando to senior, assistant senior citizens center management and senior services. Four, five, three, 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 appoint Tina Jimbenski to account clerk position from civil service list. Four, five, three, two, three, twenty twenty-four part-time, that's the employee rate schedules.
I think there should be a salary should be added to the title.
Want to call it the part-time employee salary schedule?
Well, it's not for all, it's just for the certain, it's just for specific part-time employees.
Their hourly rate is listed here. Okay.
Their hourly rate is, they're part-time, so they don't have salaries, they just have hourly rates.
Town Board Resolution Number four, five, three, seven, five, authorizing the youth bureau staff to attend Association of New York State Youth Bureau's 2024 Annual Youth Leadership Forum.
Four, five, three, two, four, resolution to appoint delegate to New York State Association of Towns AOT 2024 Annual Meeting.
Town Board Resolution Number four, five, three, zero, two, update town workplace violence prevention program.
And those are all individual people. Uh, four, five, three, seven, three, notice of public hearing to consider establishing a sewer district known as the Riverside Sewer District in Hamlet of Riverside.
And that was a subject of, part of our work session today. Uh, Town Board Resolution four, five, four, one, six, a notice of public hearing to consider acquisition of Ford Red Creek Road in the Hamlet of Hampton Bays and amend CPF project plan and CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property.
Was this something that was talked about before the first of the year? I don't remember this.
This was something that we had.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Clerk, as liaison, I'd like to be a co-sponsor to this one. Four, five, four, five, four, one, six.
Got it.
Four, five, three, four, one, accept a deed of dedication of open space in connection with the subdivision known as Map of Chickenbrier located in Eastport.
Town Board Resolution four, five, three, four, two, co-sponsor with Councilman Yacelli, authorize the acquisition of the property located at ninety-nine Montauk Highway, water mill for the production of community housing through the Community Housing Fund. Town Board Resolution four, five, four, one, five, co-sponsor with Councilwoman McNamara, Councilman Yacelli, consider the acquisition of a historic preservation and conservation easement on property located at five sixty Bridge Lane Sagaponic. Amend the community preservation project plan and CPF management plan and stewardship plan to include said property.
Thank you, Sandy.
Supervisor, did you want?
We have two more.
Oh, we have the two.
Did you want also?
The first one, Town Board Resolution.
We were going to wait and hear from.
On the bond or the, or this? The community center ones, you wanted to wait until, I didn't know if you wanted to withdraw those or.
We were going to wait till after we had the discussion.
Okay, because I checked with Mark, it's not for pass service.
Okay, so it's all perfected. Then there were two walk-ons that everybody's already approved, I mean, not approved, but.
The four, five, one, seven, three and four, five, four, two, three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Add-on.
Right, these are add-ons.
Oh.
Right.
Yeah.
As opposed to walk-on.
The, um, the, the one is to replace the, the change in the, where is that one?
I believe it's a second.
That's number two.
Yeah.
You have the, the add-on packet.
I think I have it.
Can I go ahead?
It's probably, oh, this one.
Oh, it's probably on my desk. I must have walked off without it.
Yeah, we have papers here.
I gave him mine.
Town Board.
The electrical permit is the second one.
So the first one, Town Board Resolution four, five, one, seven, three, a resolution adopting Community Housing Fund project plan as an amendment to the Southampton Town Housing Plan.
I only, I'm just having a little concern about putting a resolution on for something like this before, you know, when we're having a public hearing on it, you know, shouldn't we wait till the, the meeting that follows? So it doesn't, you know, so we can give due consideration to the comments that we receive at the public hearing.
I don't think we even had the, this is all pending, right? We need the Suffolk County Planning Commission.
We, we did.
We got it?
From the Suffolk County Planning Commission.
Just came in yesterday or something, I think, or the day before.
And they had comments that were addressed and they were covered by, or addressed by our housing, the Southampton Town Housing Plan. So that's why I put it on.
Yeah.
But if you want to withdraw, we can, this is our third public hearing on this.
We can always, you can always, you can always table it on Tuesday if there's feedback that contradicts adopting it. This is the third public hearing.
So I'd just like to state that this is simply just stating that the, the draft plan that was presented to us from Cara is, is now going to be, just act as an amendment to the existing plan as determined by the Suffolk County.
An addendum.
Right, which is something that I did bring up, I just want to say. Uh, that's okay.
It's just, no, but in the thing, in the Suffolk County Planning Commission, it refers to it as the draft housing plan. You know, it doesn't even say project plan, but.
Well, they, yeah, they refer to it because it's, it was in draft form.
But they don't say draft project plan.
Yeah.
Right, which again speaks to what the function of that particular document was supposed to be. Uh, but I think I'm, I'm perfectly fine with this. And as Councilman Sciboni and Councilwoman McNamara indicated, depending on what the feedback is on the public hearing, I think that could help us make a determination on how, how we move forward.
Okay, I just don't want the community to think it's a foregone conclusion that we're not, you know, because that would indicate that we're not really listening to what they have to say if we already decided we're going to do the resolution. But we don't have to do it, we can always.
We could always table.
Is this one mine?
The fee one.
Four, five, four, two, three, to amend the 2024 Department of Land Management Building and Zoning Division electrical permit fee schedule. Okay.
To add any more?
Yes, add-ons, there are two add-ons, yeah.
So I'm going to take my leave now, but, um, may I give you a, a deadline?
Yes.
It takes three thirty to hear back one way or the other.
We'll get to you by two.
What you would like me to do. I don't know how long, the next presentation is going to be.
Wow, ambitious.
We'll make it, we'll make it the first thing we talk about. I hope we can figure it out in thirty-five minutes.
So let's make it three o'clock is the deadline, okay? And just in case something arises in your conversation that takes longer than you anticipated. Um, but if you could get back to me one way or the other, so then we can forge ahead to start processing. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sunday. Thank you, Sunday.
All right, so we're going to get an update on certain projects from this and Tom.
Thank you.
So you guys have?
We have one of the great.
Behind, we'll have a couple of plans. Yeah, he's asking. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Okay. So the first project that I put on the agenda is the West Hampton Community Center, um, cause you guys have some questions, quick, uh, quick summary of it.
Well, let's explain the packet first. So in this packet that we've given to you today is an agenda of five specific projects, some quick bullet points on each project, as well as a fact sheet attached to that of the entire project. Gives a backstory, gives us, uh, what contractors are on it right now, what the story is to date, and where we're looking to go next with the project. There's a breakdown of that for each one of these five, and then there's also plans associated with each five, so you have something to follow.
Tom, where did you pick each of these five?
Uh, we picked, you want to explain this?
These are, as most are shovel-ready and two are very close to shovel-ready, so if the board wants to proceed, these five projects, we can proceed with them in the next two months. So that was, and I didn't wanna blindside you with resolutions or proposed resolutions awarding contracts or authorizing work to be done that you had never seen before, so I figured we would have this meeting, discuss it, make sure that you, you know, prefer to move forward.
Yeah, we can answer any questions. They're projects that we've been working on for a year, two years at this point, most of them, um, and they're ready to go, uh, we're just awaiting the, uh, funds to be made ready in March, so.
Well.
Okay.
Mike, all right, do you want to, the, the thing about the West Hampton Community Center construction is. Twofold, um, I think when the property was, how much parking is at that property? That was the question.
Approximately enough, fifty-six spots.
Fifty-six?
It's not striped in the rear anymore, the striping has faded significantly, so it's actually kinda hard to tell how many spots are back there, but we ran the numbers and.
See, I have a problem with it because when I read it about it in the newspaper, it said it was turnkey, and then we're gonna spend another four point three million dollars fixing it up if it's turnkey.
May I ask when you read that and was that acquisition or was that recently?
When they bought it.
When they bought it, a few years ago, and.
That was, that was erroneous.
That was a misrepresentation.
And I, I know the property, I know there's not enough parking on it.
For, okay.
And, um, cause that's one of the reasons the car dealer got rid of it, and I think if we're gonna spend four point three million dollars, we should find another town piece of property, if they can find it, it's more. Build a, build a building with plenty of parking, with some office space in it, where we can have satellite office for some of our employees instead of having them come here. I think this, this spend.
Three point nine.
Eight million dollars total on the building with not enough parking and it's, it's like a, it's like a, you know, I think it's a good idea, but I think it's in the wrong place.
So the, the previous use was a restaurant, full restaurant on second floor as well as a cardio shop on the first floor? Uh, the proposed uses that we'll have now are for a senior center on the first floor and a youth services on the second floor, those tend to operate on differing schedules.
Yeah.
Senior centers typically busy in the morning.
How many spots are there? Do you, I, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, but like the Crowan Center?
So it's very comparable to what we have in Flanders, um, it's frankly, it's even comparable to our spots in Hampton Bays. And if you go to the Crowan Center on any given Tuesday, it's very sparse, um, so the, in the middle of the day at least, when they have youth services at night, that's when it gets a little busier, but even those kids are getting dropped off. Tracy has a bus, he goes and picks some of them up, but, um, in any event, the use is gonna mirror that of Flanders for the most part. Where it'll be a warming kitchen on the first floor, they'll serve hot meals to seniors, there's community space, um, and then the second floor, to Tom's point, would be the youth services function, however they decide to program that. And it does actually have, um, or at least is proposed to include satellite town offices on the second floor.
And we have dedicated space for veterans groups.
Yes, the Legion.
The American Legion.
Aren't people saying at Flanders, there's not enough room or?
There are currently.
There's not enough space for parking?
There's forty-six spaces at Flanders, um, and there's also no street parking at Flanders, there is street parking at one twelve.
And there is, there is a plan for a parking sharing agreement in, in the Flanders Riverside area with the church, they're, they're submitting a plan, another thing. They're submitting a plan, uh, to rebuild their church and create a cross-access parking, um, scenario, uh, there. In conjunction with the ambulance, so yes, and it's being addressed. And another thing that the board really needs to be updated on.
Thank you.
So just playing devil's advocate, what's the pathway if, say, the, this board decided they didn't wanna go forward with this project?
Well, to that end, I did have a question, whatever happened, and I honestly don't know what happened with the Hite property that the town bought behind the elementary school, cause I thought that that was supposed to be the c- community center and it was right near the school, so the children would be able to go directly there.
I'm not aware of the entire backstory, um, it's currently, the garage on that property is in use by the Parks Department for storage, um, beyond that, I think.
Was that the Bauer property also?
Yes, the Bauer.
We used to have, we used to have a garden there and.
It's the landscape.
There's a, there's a, there's a, there's currently, there's a greenhouse there.
Yeah.
There's a giant storage barn.
Or did CPF bought it?
It's CPF parks, and we were looking at a skate park potentially there.
Beyond that, I believe that the cost of a new building was weighed against the renovation of an existing building, so. I could try and dig those numbers up, they've gotta be six years old, so.
You probably also need Dorothy to give you the, uh, the breakdown that you spoke of before in terms of the, what it would cost to do the debt service as opposed to a brand new, like a, a number of different options she'd have to work out, the numbers for you.
I didn't think that that Bauer property was purchased with CPF money because it was supposed to be for a community center, unless you can put a community center on CPF property.
No, you can't, we can check it.
Yeah, part of it has to, part of the Bauer property is active and part of it is passive per the CPF. So we might, well, we could put, theoretically, I believe we can put a community center on the active parcel, I don't know how large or how much space is on the active.
It seems nice for the kids to be able to go right from there instead of getting their parents to have to drive them over to the other location.
For reference, the ambulance building we're constructing in North Sea is costing the town four point three million for a brand new building with nowhere near the level of amenities that something like this would have, so we would be talking a significant amount of money to construct a new community center.
And it is hard to fathom, I know big numbers, but, um, this has been value engineered to the utmost degree here. It's bare bones, we're saving floors, we're trying to save ceilings where we can, um.
So if the board decided not to move forward with this property, um, we would ask that, uh, we'd be allowed to do the research on the Bauer property and we'd be provided with, we could come up with an estimate of what a new building would cost on a different piece of property.
Uh, one more item in terms of, uh, usage for this building, uh, it was desirable because of the extensive basement and that, uh, storage facilities were needed for the town and we could use it for that purpose.
Correct.
As well as what we listed earlier.
There are two existing elevators in the building, one is a passenger elevator that was used for the restaurant, that one will still be utilized for the youth services on the second floor as well as town hall swing space on the second floor, there's also a.
Town hall what?
Swing space.
There is actually office space that we could utilize.
We're proposing eight cubicles, uh, as well as one locked office space on that second floor, on that side, um, there are large cubicles, we could kinda tighten them up and add more space if needed. But there's also an existing freight elevator within the building that's been serviced, it's operational, um, they use that to bring carts to the basement, um, but that freight elevator is ideal for records management to move whatever they need to in and out of that building.
Right, so it's a unique building.
No, that's two forty, um, that, that's the Hampton Bays, the elevators in one twelve are.
Oh.
That work.
So it's a unique building in that regard, that there's a lot of things that go along with this building, sorry, Bill. But when, when we evaluated it and we compared it to new construction and a community center, we thought purchasing an existing building was more advantageous financially than building a new one. That was the thinking at the time.
Correct me if I'm wrong too, there was also supposed to be, the county was going to basically rent the second floor and cover the debt service on the building at one point, wasn't it?
The district attorney's office did look at it, but I don't know if that has panned out.
No, that is not.
No, I know it didn't happen, but I think that was at the time, that was kinda like the slam dunk, they were gonna, they were gonna rent the upstairs and then it would kinda cover what we needed to do on the lower level.
We're still teen, uh, funding from Verizon to rent out a portion of roof for cell service, but.
And there's the consideration of what to do with the building, now you could always put it up for sale, but to use it as anything at this point, given the current condition, would still require a substantial investment to renovate it into whatever that would be, whether it just be town offices, you could use it for storage space, show we use it for storage space now, but to make it an actual occupiable building would be an investment as well. Whether it be community center or something.
Yeah, the roof needs to be repaired, the restaurant on the second floor is completely gutted, every piece of metal in that kitchen was removed, um, by someone. And the first floor is essentially just wide open with two restrooms, so.
Prick.
Yeah, uh, okay, it's.
This is honestly, this is the first time I've seen a plan for it.
Yeah.
Me too.
Me too.
And it's already been out to bid and the bids have come back in and, you know.
We worked with our liaison and our town supervisor at the time for this, so it's not that we developed this in our office to get to this point.
Yeah, John Bouvier was very instrumental in seeing it move fast.
I mean, it's a good idea, you know, a community center, but it has to be in the right place.
And it's a big deal and it's really expensive and we should be able to look at the plans and talk about it, I mean, maybe we want more than eight cubicles, maybe storage shouldn't go in such an expensive building, maybe there's a way to have storage elsewhere in a less expensive way. I mean, I'm not saying that that's, you know what I mean, of course we need storage.
Well, I just was adding that on, you know, as I'm thinking and thinking, this is not my project.
No. You know what I mean, maybe storage could go in some other less expensive building and free up the basement space if we do use this for something else.
Well, originally, we had proposed improvements or community center type improvements to the basement, but that added to the cost, so again, with bioengineering and paring everything down, there was considerations for bowling alleys, um, and I forget what else we were gonna put down there, but those were all removed just due to the cost of installing a bowling alley.
And in our conversations with youth services, that now increased the amount of staff members that they need to provide, if you're gonna split children between the second floor and basement or.
Well, there's also, I mean, we're, we're still talking about, there's no staffing in placement, so we're talking about senior services is gonna need additional staffing, you know, i- it's, the staffing part of it is in addition to the building part of it, so.
Plus more parking too.
Yeah, well.
I mean, you go to Hampton Bays if I can.
Hampton Bays is a.
You can't park there.
Unique situation and then it's shared with six other, uh, businesses and stores, it's a basic community parking lot, um, that is not this property. This property has its own parking all to itself, if, to take that into consideration.
I always liked the idea of a community center in West Hampton.
I think it's a good idea.
Beach along with the senior center to, it's, right now, they have to, seniors have to drive to either Hampton Bays or, or Riverside, or Flanders Riverside.
What would?
If you have the library.
The library right now.
What type of figure would you support?
It's temporary.
Do you have a figure in mind that you think would be more?
Mine is parking, cause, you know, in, in my view, I think that town board should be, was, you know, we should meet there once in a while. If we meet there, there's not enough parking.
That would likely be the case, correct?
We also have not designed anything in that building to have a meeting room.
Yeah, it should, it should be, it should, you know, we should have.
Bill, just for clarification, are you saying you envision this being sort of a satellite?
I think it should be a, like a satellite.
Town Hall West?
Yeah.
Well, it's not, it's not set up for that.
Not, not in, not in.
Still parking for that either.
Nor am I aware of any properties that would support a use like that that exist, um, I, I, it's one of the larger buildings in West Hampton.
Janice might have some thoughts on this.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're, we're getting updated on the West Hampton Community Center.
It should be multi-use.
There's always talk of a rock wall, there's no rock wall in here, right?
No, it's not proposed.
Okay.
And the storage, the whole basement is just storage, it's such an expensive building to store documents in, you could do something else for that.
The basement doesn't require any funds.
I just know we already have staffing issues.
It's existing storage right now and we're just gonna.
Yeah, so renovating the basement would add to the existing cost.
And that's, it's a big factor, when you spend other people's money.
With respect to staffing though, if you, if we hypothetically did have a building further west like this, I mean, but that would, that would attract more staff that's needed, no?
Well, no, I'm talking about, we need staffing for this building.
To run the program.
It's not currently in our budget.
Like youth services would need another arm to run this building, senior services.
Senior services would need more employees to run this.
More people in the warming kitchen, give you a site manager.
Because we are offering more services to our constituents.
Correct, yeah.
You know, just, that's the other side of the staffing is that we're offering more, we would be offering more services.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh, the Crowan Center was constructed in, I think, two thousand and six or so, um, that I believe is our newest building, but we haven't put anything up since.
Is it possible to do the downstairs as like, uh, kinda like the Crowan Center where it's a shared between youth and senior services and do more office space on the upper floor?
Ooh, I like that idea.
Yeah, it's better, but still come down.
I mean, I'm just saying because.
Yeah, it's all possible.
I would love to get, just, just, you know, this is a whole different thing, but I would love to get, you know, engineering further, we've had a really hard time getting, attracting engineers because.
The commute.
They're mainly ba- based in the western, you know, western Suffolk and getting them out here has been a challenge, and, you know, I think if we could. We're looking at, you know, getting office, I mean, I'd like to see more office space in the western end of town.
And, and the building department, right?
And then, I mean, it would cut down on a lot of the.
Know what you could do in your bathrooms and, I mean, we'd still need bathrooms, obviously, but.
I'm not sure it changes the layout of the restroom facilities, but yeah, it would be extremely helpful, um, if we do redesign anything, we'll need to go back to the architects for a change order, um, we'll have to cancel all these bids, redo the plans, um, looking at probably three to six months.
New permits.
Yep, so just with that in mind.
Can we, can we, this is a very technical plan, can you send us like a PDF of just a floor layout plan without all of the specs and everything?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go back to our original massing documents, they're color-coded, they talk about what room is for what use.
Yeah, that would be great, cause this is hard to read for us.
Cause maybe we could cut costs and maybe we could, you know, get more of what we need and still cut down some of the costs on the build-out.
Sure, um, it wouldn't change the HVAC very much, it wouldn't change the roof layout, I mean, we're talking about cracking.
Well, that's what I mean, and then we could see if we could go forward with, as is.
Yeah, and the number that would go down would likely only be general construction.
If that, I mean, you're still constructing, so it would probably go up as a result of there being less open space and more office type space. I think you could reconfigure it, I don't know that the price would change very much.
I would just like to see a easier to be.
Yeah, yeah, of course, this is more, uh, has to do with demolitions and partitions and, uh, Drayson is, uh, very technical with his labeling of improvements. He's got a number and a color, so.
Yeah.
No, it's great, I just, we, I don't think, this is beyond what I think we, what we need.
Yeah, we can absolutely get you the, the massing document.
Oh, rock climbing is on it?
Yeah.
Oh, it's called the rock climbing room.
The room, yeah. What we do with it is not gonna be rock climbing.
I mean, we, you know, we, the community, it would be great, benefits to the community, but if there could be some compromise so that we can benefit, uh, you know, the services we provide through town hall also. Cause if we can't fill our staffing needs because people don't want, can't commute all the way, then, you know, we're letting them down in other ways.
Of course.
We have to hire a part-time people to fill out different departments to get the work done. And I would like to know what happened with the Bauer property, is it just sitting, not being used for anything, maybe?
No, it's definitely, Parks uses it, there's a giant storage building on there that Parks basically puts all of their seasonal items in.
They have stockpiles in there.
It's used by CPF to, don't they do, um.
I'm not sure what CPF uses it for.
They use it for, um, invasives to, basically, they cover them with tarps and that's how they, that's where they get.
Oh, boy, okay.
I think, I don't know, maybe they're not even doing that, but.
All right, um, yeah, if you would provide us with the direction.
Nothing that, no, nothing with seeds, no.
We'd like to move forward with whatever you wanna move forward with.
They're very, you know, very, very specific about what she would do.
And get us something like this, we'll look at it right away, we don't wanna hold anything up, but we need to be comfortable with.
Yeah, just the, the plan what we have now, I'm not comfortable with.
Uh, in reading it or understanding it?
No, I can understand it, but the use.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what, what.
So we are now moving forward with the bids, those bids are gonna be thrown out, that's what I'm here for.
Well, we're gonna hold off on them this week.
How long are they good? Yeah, how long are they good, or when do they have to be awarded? Yeah, how long are they good? Or when do they have to be awarded?
To be repricing.
I spoke with Mark and he didn't have an issue with taking them off this agenda, but if you wanna talk to him quickly, we have until three.
Yeah, it's, I think their bid bond is sixty days.
You should, talk to Mark and then just let us know.
Well, then why don't we just have Sunday, why don't we just have Sunday leave them on and then we can just table them?
Yeah, I like that.
This way they're there, so we're not under any kind of crunch and they're there if we need them for any.
Well, to Bill's point, if the plan, if the plan is not desired anymore, this plan.
Yeah.
Then it really.
You have to go, we, we bid it.
It's when it's done. Um, the contractors bid on this plan, so this is what they're building.
Well, I can't, we just withdraw that. I'm, you probably, when did the bids come in?
Two weeks ago, yeah.
So we probably have at least thirty days.
We put out the RFPs, right, the last, like, the first meeting in December, I think, or something?
Yeah, uh, November, but yeah, it opened in December.
So, I don't think there's anything that says, I think it's within a reasonable amount of time, you have to award the bid and then you have a certain specific time to sign the contracts. So it's not unreasonable to.
No, I wouldn't call it unreasonable to delay awarding the contracts and just.
If we're gonna do that.
If we're going to significantly change this, there's no.
We have to re-ship it.
That we're awarding these bids.
But let's withdraw, so let's withdraw those resolutions and we don't award the bid right now. And if you could give us that, that plan in an easily readable.
Can do.
And then we can talk about how it could be, maybe other, maybe the board would be comfortable with a revised plan or, or not. I don't know.
Let Sunday know we're withdrawing them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And we did it before two o'clock?
Yeah.
Three, she said.
She didn't have anything to add.
Well, ahead of that curve.
Janice, sorry, um, would I also, um, correct me, would I be able to withdraw my previous withdrawal? I mean, we weren't like, this wasn't a town board, but I withdrew that, um, resolution for Dark Skies. Can I withdraw the withdrawal and just keep it on and I'll, if I wanna table it, I'll table it?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, you think?
Withdraw the withdrawal?
You could do that on the floor.
He might be able to think about it.
When it will be on there, he withdrew it.
Well, now I can.
Now you can withdraw, withdraw, withdraw and it'll be there and you table it or withdraw it. We have your options open.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, next one.
Moving on.
Head Start.
Moving on to Head Start.
Gotta walk through to withdraw, Chris.
Smaller price tag.
You should have started with this.
Another existing facility. Um, background on the Head Start facility is there's a shared space now. Would you like to speak about Head Start?
Not yet.
We're not there yet.
Wait, is this?
No, now you have to wait, Janice.
Is this already funded with a bond or these now?
No, these are the ones we have bonds for.
Okay.
Actually, could you?
Head Start is funded, like, we're not bonding anymore, like, two hundred this year.
Um, we use ARPA money. I think it's four hundred.
Yeah, can we, can you let us know? And we also got a, we just got a, we got ARPA money from Steve alone for, was that for Head, that was for Head Start?
Yes.
Uh, right, the smaller, right, it was one ninety, but it was done at the same gay of the, uh.
Yeah, no, it was a big check day.
Empire State Development Grant, too.
Yes.
Yeah, Flanders, it's, uh, we use it ARPA.
Okay.
ARPA money, four hundred and dollars this year, yeah.
Gotcha.
And this is desperately needed.
So, as it exists right now, if you're looking at the plan, hopefully a little easier to follow, the white areas are the proposed SEMI spaces, um, second one.
Children's museum, what did you say?
This existing rectangle on the right-hand side is the current space that they have. The addition is the rectangle immediately to the left. So they're essentially doubling their space more or less. As it exists right now, SEMI operates outside the hours of Head Start. So some of the children that attend the Head Start program, finish Head Start program and go to an after-school program in SEMI, um, they build Legos, they paint, they do arts and crafts essentially. Um, SEMI has always expressed a desire to expand that service. It's actually in their agreement to expand that service for weekends and summertime activities. Um, they do a little bit, but not as much as they would like to. And the chief complaint is that they are confined to the small space. So they approached former supervisor about expanding this, um, facility for their use, so they can have more exhibit space, more floor room to do more activities with the children. We've gotten extensive funding assistance. Um, there is some town money in there. I don't know the exact amount.
And we noted that the synergy between the children's museum and Head Start is, is something that works quite well. It brings kids in, gets them involved in Head Start and vice versa.
The impetus, Nick is absolutely correct, but the impetus came from actually from the RAP plan, if I could use a fuller word. Everybody's present. Uh, in the RAP plan, there is a.
Downstairs.
There is a.
We're gonna, I'm gonna do this in person with you, okay? Your withdrawals.
Thank you.
There is a commitment for the town to try to locate a permanent home for SEMI in the Riverside Flanders community. So that's sort of like an agreement that the town committed itself to. We searched for several years to find such a place with little or no success, actually with no success. And, and finally, we stumbled upon the ability and, um, Tom's predecessor, Christine Fenton, came up with the suggestion that this open courtyard area, if we were able to enclose that, it would, it would double the amount of space that SEMI had to use and it would, would also allow for more co-operational programs rather than just after-school programs. So we began to pursue that. We did get a grant, as Nick pointed to. Tom and John is completely correct. SEMI and S, and, not S Y S, SEMI and, um,
Head Start?
Head Start do co-habitat in their current location, the museum in, uh, Bridgehampton, so they have a working relationship with each other. They've been extremely enthusiastic about this and in fact, the grant that I think Cindy referred to, that Mr. Malone provided, was actually a grant to SEMI for, um, furnishing or equipping the location, because if, if any of you have visited, I think most of you probably have, it's a lot of Montessori-based, interactive kind of children's learning behavior, experiential behaviors. So there are kinds of unique pieces of equipment, uh, stores and Legos and all different kinds of things. So they got the grant to, uh, equip the unit. We got the grant and some additional funding and some town funding in order to build it. And I think we're scheduled for twenty twenty-five?
No, um, if the board would like to move forward, construction of this can begin in the summer of twenty twenty-four. The first order of business will be doing all the loud outside construction. Head Start is not always super pleased to have heavy construction going on when children are in the Head Start program. So steel superstructure and basically making the building tight to weather will be the first order of business over the summer. And then, once the Head Start program starts up again in the fall, they can move inside and complete the interior finishes. It's essentially a shell. Um, we're not furnishing it for them. We're not decorating walls. It will be a building with just utilitarian flooring and painted walls that they can then go in and furnish, which is the grant that they received, once we turn it over to their.
Both SEMI and Head Start, as most of the board members know, have a no-cost needs for this facility. Uh, and when we renegotiated the most current one, we limited it to one year and we put in there that they had some obligation to help expedite and accommodate the new construction. Um, Head Start being governed by the New York State Department of Education, there are certain construction activities that cannot take place, whether they want to or not. They can't allow them to take place while children occupy the building. So that puts a little bit of a, a delimeter on the construction part of it. And we may, may or may not be able to finish it in that period of time, but we can't uh, start, uh, a construction activity at our will, or even when Head Start agrees to it, we have to abide by the constraints that are established by the New York State Department of Education. There, it's doable, uh, it's a tight timeline, but, um, I think we could get it done and, and it's been well-received by the community.
Well, that's the Annie Jackson.
The Annie Jackson.
Yes, that's, and you guys just passed a resolution naming that building in the name of a former director and community member, uh, who was the director of the Head Start program. He, uh, particularly the Franca group has always been strongly supportive of this and very enthusiastic to have the homes uh, in their community. It's very well-received by the community at large and provides an invaluable service to a community that doesn't have access to those kinds of opportunities.
Did you look into any additional grant opportunities through the Department of Ed, um, um, national side as well as state side or?
We have not. Michael, I think that the, uh, SEMI has on their own.
Okay.
Uh, they filed a grant, which they did get awarded, uh, in addition to the one that the, uh, the county provided. Uh, I don't know what Head Start has done from their perspective. They're funded by the federal government ultimately, so I don't know what opportunities they have. I think going forward, given the enrollment and the, that they have and the reception from the community.
Yeah.
There may be a foundation for other grant opportunities.
I'd like to move forward with this.
I'd like to move forward. I, I'm.
I think it's a great idea. Black kids.
So to that effect, um, there will be resolutions before you guys, before your guys' consideration. The first meeting in February, likely just noticing the bid.
Got it.
Get the bids and go from there.
Fair enough.
Next project, this is another shovel-ready project. Red Creek Park Pickleball and Tennis Courts.
Is this already funded? I didn't notice this on the bond list.
Is Red Creek funded?
I saw the one in North Sea, but not.
Pretty sure this is a bond that they issued to.
Somebody comes back, she just wants to interrupt.
Yeah. No, sure, I'm writing down the number three now for her.
Yes, so that Red Creek Pickleball Courts, holding happened last year.
Okay.
It's roll, roll, you know, roll over money that we already have in place.
Gotcha. So this project, shovel-ready, we've hired the engineer, the engineer's prepared the plans. I gave you what it will be and what it currently is, just so you can see that, it is in the footprint of the existing tennis courts.
Which the existing tennis courts are pretty much shot anyway.
Yeah, so the existing tennis courts are paved with blacktop, they're asphalt. They're about twenty, twenty-five years old. I think the park was built in nineteen ninety-seven. Something like that. And they're just at their functional limit. They're, they're useful service.
Asphalt doesn't work well for that.
Yeah, asphalt is a very high-maintenance material and even to repair them at this point would be a substantial investment. Basically ripping up the existing asphalt that's there and putting a new layer down. This project proposes replacing the courts with post-tensioned concrete.
Oh, would you excuse us for a minute while we just do this housekeeping with Sunday?
I had to get my glasses. So I could see.
Sorry, I just wanted. So, Madam Clerk, I would like to withdraw, I'm the sponsor on.
Could you take page numbers? Do you have page numbers maybe or?
I have the res, the number.
Okay.
Would you rather have the page number? I have the resolution number.
Say it again?
I have the resolution numbers if you.
Okay, well, okay. Go ahead.
Four, five, three, two, eight. Four, five, two, six, nine. Four, five, two, seven, zero. Four, five, two, seven, one. Four, five, two, seven, two. And four, five, two, seven, three. That we're just withdrawing for further discussion.
Okay, so I'm just gonna read off the last three numbers. Three, two, eight, two, six, nine, two, seven, oh, two, seven, one, two, seven, two, and two, seven, three.
Yes.
Okay.
And then Michael.
And Madam Clerk, I apologize for my ambivalence, um, but I'm not going to, um, withdraw I, uh, resolution number four, five, four, one, seven on Dark Skies. That's page one eighteen. I'll leave it on the agenda and we'll make a determination during the town board meeting. Thank you very much.
Nope. You're so polite.
Thank you.
So, Madam Clerk, this is so old, though. I wanted to call you Ms. Clerk or something.
Ms. Clerk.
Mrs. Clerk.
Mrs. Clerk.
All right, so back to the next, thank you, Sunday.
So back to Red Creek. Um, Parks has been receiving complaints about the courts for years, likely. Um, they reached out to Tom and Municipal Works to help them get an engineer and then design the, ultimately, the replacement of the existing courts. Um, we did go back and forth last year. Should we rip out the asphalt and put new asphalt down? Should we put post-tension down? Should we scale everything back and just make it smaller? The consensus between our office, the Parks Department, and the community that utilized these is they wanted the pickleball courts over the tennis. Um, that's kind of the way things are going right now. The post-tensioned concrete has an expected life, um, a service life of about thirty years.
We used it with great success at North Sea Park for the four pickleball courts up there.
Did I just read about North Sea Park?
Yes, North Sea is adding two additional ones.
Yeah, yeah.
Should you desire to do that, but, um.
Are they all used up?
Yeah, so North Sea, there's lines.
Lines, that's good.
And that was the request at North Sea for the two additional pickleball courts.
So there's not gonna be any tennis courts here at all now?
At Red Creek? No, there'll be three.
Three.
Yep.
Follow the three.
I personally fought for the three, um.
It's good.
Yeah, people like tennis.
But, um.
I think pickleball, it goes in waves.
Well, that's, that's the consideration you make, right?
Like, I have a feeling in like ten years, we're gonna be making the pickleball courts, tennis courts again.
Yeah.
So there'll be three tennis courts and five?
Eight pickleball courts. So pickleball courts are much smaller than tennis courts. You can fit two pickleball courts in one tennis court.
Theoretically, more people could be serviced.
More people can be serviced, correct.
If they're playing.
And another aspect of this.
They seem to be.
Another aspect of this project that it's not shown on these plans, but currently, if you're familiar with Red Creek Park, there's a inline roller hockey rink and there's pickleball courts striped in the inline roller hockey rink, which has caused some friction at the park because when people wanna play roller hockey, there's other people playing pickleball and vice versa. So this takes.
Separates it.
Takes pickleball out of the inline hockey, puts it in its own space, keeps tennis and allows Parks to then rehabilitate the inline hockey rink sometime in the future.
Does it use, does it use?
I mean, yeah, for inline hockey, shh, shh, shh.
Marginally, yeah.
Okay, it's getting, all right.
Depends where you are on the court, but, I mean.
You need the whole rink.
Yeah, um. But I know that they've been working and trying to get some prices and different ideas on how to fix that.
Can I ask you a question? Is it possible to have tennis courts and like, in a different color line pickleball courts within the tennis courts?
I prefer it, yeah.
So you can use them for both?
That, that's not recommended, actually. In the same court?
Yes.
Yes.
Please, I know what she's talking about.
All in the tennis court.
So the tennis players will complain. They complain about the lines, but they'll lose their minds if it's a different color and there's different lines.
Also additional net setup as well.
I've never played pickleball, so, just asking, cause it looks like you could fit two on a tennis court and keep your tennis courts.
You could put two tennis courts here, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and then. I'm just thinking like, you know, kids play on turf, that's line for different sports and they figure it out.
Can I ask you a question? Uh, just based on the legend, um, of the landscape area, what, what is going to be composed there?
Turf grass.
Just turf grass?
Turf grass?
Artificial turf grass?
Oh, well, I'm sorry, just regular.
Just grass.
Turkey bluegrass, yes, I'm sorry.
Grass, dirt, living grass.
Living, living grass, not synthetic.
Got it.
Anything that would limit the noise?
So there is an extensive stand of trees between these courts and the closest homes. We discussed that. It's not included in this. Um, Parks has other revenue sources or other funding sources where.
Trees.
Excuse me?
There are trees up here that.
I know, there's a sound barrier necessary.
Yeah, like a sound barrier on the fence.
The only person that's gonna bother is Rick Martell, so.
Well, he is right, too.
Yeah, there's sound attenuating screens that you basically hang on the chain link fence. Um, they're not expensive.
And not integral to the construction.
And not integral to construction.
That's what people complain about the pickleball, the noise.
Noise, yeah.
So what, we're, so we are putting some things up to?
We can.
But there's, if you see on the second page, there's, there's natural, there was, right, you were saying there's natural.
There's a lot of trees.
Yeah, there's a huge, it's like a thousand feet to the closest house.
Oh, well, let's see how it goes.
Exactly. And then if there's, if there's one complaint in a week, we can purchase it and Parks Maintenance can just string it up on the fence. So that's Red Creek. If you guys would like to move forward with that.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry.
There will be a resolution in front of you at the next board meeting to authorize Land Tech to do the construction. Land Tech holds a requirements contract with us for sports court maintenance and replacement essentially. So they do, they can do resurfacing, they can do painting, lines.
And the pricing has already been competitively bid ahead of time and it's essentially there for our use.
So we can budget accordingly. If we know we need something, it'll be the price that we expect.
Nick, you mentioned community members. Was there a contingent of folks in Hampton Bays who gave input to?
Yeah, Kristen and Daryl met and they keep meeting because, so Red Creek Park, we're gonna come, anticipate we'll be coming back to you a couple of times to Red Creek Park. There's obviously the skate park, um, which is farthest to the south. That is a huge issue for Parks. Skate park is beyond. I don't even know how to.
It's outdated and it's, and it's not even, it's, it's, border line's on, we're gonna have to close it.
Repair it. They do, Parks does a good job putting some lipstick on it, but, um.
Is it used a lot? Do people still use them?
They don't really use it anymore, not since Montauk, at least that's what we've been told. And the big.
What do you mean Montauk?
Montauk put in a better one.
Montauk recently revamped their entire skate park and it's a destination for Long Island even further. If this skate park was reconstructed and brought up to today's standards, it would likely get some heavy use.
But.
So the engineer that designed this is currently, they haven't started yet, but they have a contract to start public outreach and investigation into what that skate park will become. Um, so that, again, you guys will be hearing about that.
It turns out like what types of ramps and half pipes and rails. Will remain a skate park.
Yes.
That's the point, yeah.
Do we want it to be a destination?
No.
And that's a question that I would put out to the community.
Yeah.
Is whether or not they want it to be a skate park destination and, you know.
There was a lot of private funding.
I'm glad you're evaluating the, excuse me, the, uh, you know, the effect of such a.
Yeah, so the desire is not to make another Montauk-type skate park, but something that at least the community or Southampton residents can, you know, make use of. And then that inline, um, the inline hockey rink thing, we're looking at, and this is internally, but we're looking at different ways to remediate the surface of that, be it ripping up the asphalt, putting down more asphalt. I don't know if anybody's ever seen the outdoor plastic sport tiles. Um, that's a cost-effective approach because it doesn't require removing the existing asphalt. But yeah, and then there's also the basketball court and.
Baseball field. Any talk about the men's league wooden bat baseball field?
Correct.
To extend.
Essentially have a park that's reached its useful lifespan and we're trying to rehabilitate it year by year, so.
And I, I believe Kristen submitted capital projects for all the things that you're talking about, but that was additional like four million dollars.
Yes.
So we're trying to do it piece by piece.
Is this the first piece this year?
This is the first piece this year, correct.
We've done other improvements over there. The infield, the turf infield a couple of years ago, yeah.
Yeah, this was, I guess, the largest ask, of course, is pickleball. People are crazy for pickleball right now.
And we do a lot of programming at this park in the summer.
Yeah, it's, is it the largest? It's almost the largest park, if not the largest park. One of, definitely.
It's heavily used, so.
Nice. Thank you for reaching out to the community on this.
Thank you. So electric vehicle chargers, um, this is a great project. We've identified so many different funding sources that we will pay almost nothing to do this, um, at Town Hall. As you know, um.
Start, we started with an NYSERDA grant that we applied to the New York State Energy Research Development Authority for. It's a seventy thousand dollar grant that is for the construction of three charging stations, six ports. Um, and we applied for that at the beginning of twenty-two, or the end of twenty-two, something like that. Um, we need to finish it, uh, by the second quarter of twenty twenty-four is the deadline that our contract with NYSERDA holds us to. So we're looking to, um, begin implementing that. You want to talk about make-ready and the rest of it?
Sure. And then PSEG has a program called EV Make-Ready Program. And they provide rebates based on the level of electric vehicle charging you provide that cover the utility side make-ready improvements and what they call the customer side make-ready improvements. It excludes the chargers themselves, but all the infrastructure. So a utility side would be perhaps a new transformer or the conduit and the wire that runs from your main distribution panel to the secondary prime, uh, the secondary power on a pole. And then customer side, of course, would be your main distribution panel and all the conduit and all your cables and whatever other items of construction that you need to actually get the power to the charging stations. They give a ninety percent rebate on all of that. So we buy the electric vehicle chargers. They cost around eight thousand dollars each, I think, right?
Yeah, they're about.
It's like eight grand each. Um, we installed the, we installed one of these, what we proposed here in Good Ground Park. And they use it, believe it or not, cause we get the, the payment every month.
Yeah.
But, um, so for about sixteen thousand, out of pocket, if you will, we would purchase the two electric vehicle chargers, have them installed for a little bit more, probably around twenty thousand, furnish and install. And then have that covered by the NYSERDA grant and the make-ready improvements would be funded ninety percent by PSEG or rebated ninety percent by PSEG. So we would essentially pay nothing out of pocket for this part.
Would the public be charged to use these?
That's up to the, so that's like a policy question for you guys. There's no.
I'll talk about our current setup. So we have the ability to set the rate on the chargers. We can set if there are, uh, time of use restrictions. So if you're done charging, you've gotta move your car within ten minutes. Otherwise you'll get a certain additional fee. We can set the rate to zero, um, but then the town would be responsible for paying for the electricity that's being used. Or we can set it so that we either break even or make a profit. Um, it's all.
I just wanna, I'm asking that question because I just wanna make sure that we can at night park town vehicles there and not charge ourselves for.
So there'll have to be a restriction on these. Um, the plan is the electric, the fleet of electric vehicles, we park there overnight and recharge. And then whoever is assigned those vehicles will be out during the day, um, working. And then it'll become open to the public, but there'll be a restriction in public charging from, I don't know, ten AM till two PM or something along those lines.
Yeah, and the software's intricate enough that I can basically recognize different vehicles that are charging on this and basically adjust the parameters accordingly.
How about town employees who have electric cars who commute with?
Yeah, they can park them during the day. The requirement from NYSERDA is that the public is able to use these, so.
So does the, does the parameters of ten to two, does that sort of disqualify what NYSERDA is requesting?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't set ten to two parameters, but I would make, basically a rule of the town employees are required to move those vehicles in the morning when Town Hall opens.
So we couldn't, so you, basically you couldn't have a town employee coming in with their personal electric vehicle, taking their town vehicle and leaving their personal vehicle there to charge while they're at work?
Yeah, I mean, they're public.
I was wondering about the overlap there. People come in work, they go, they shine in.
Well, we could put like a two-hour charging restriction if we needed to, um, just like to invite the two-hour parking restriction.
Okay.
And that wouldn't be prevented by the NYSERDA grant.
And are these fast chargers or are they just?
These are level twos.
So moderate chargers.
Okay.
What, we have a fleet of electric vehicles?
We have two Leafs and three Teslas currently, yes.
Why can't we get the fast ones?
A lot more money and a lot more infrastructure.
So what's the average?
This is a level two.
Okay.
Yeah, level, level three fast charging, um, requires an extensive amount of infrastructure.
Three fakes.
And not always, most of the time, but.
Probably talking two to three hundred thousand dollars for fast chargers and we also don't have the space to support the equipment.
The level two.
That's issue at Town Hall, really.
The level two is, is I think doable. You know, they have them in, uh, Southampton Village, um, behind Bamboo Restaurant, they put them in. Um, and it takes like, you know, depending on what, you know, uh, capacity you have as a, you know, in your, your car battery. You know, takes anywhere between three hours, maybe five hours. Um, it's not bad. My concern is that, is if, if it's the purpose of, of, of allowing it for public use, they're sort of, and then we also allow it for some of our fleet. There, there, there might be some conflicts presented with it. I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. You know, you look at Brookhaven Town, they have windmills, uh, in Brook, at Brookhaven Town Halls, you know, it's, it's pretty cool. So how, how can we sort of get, um, to that climate-ready, uh, capacity? I think that this is a great, a great opportunity for us, but I'd like to know how we can sort of also resolve any potential conflicts ahead of time before we install them.
Well, currently, all of the electric vehicles are in possession of the Division of Intramodal Transportation, which is managed by my department.
Okay.
So they are currently not assigned to individual employees. They're assigned to the pool, so.
So do you have, do you have charging stations for those, for those vehicles now?
They go behind the building and they jam a bar parking.
We don't, we have, Alex. We have, we have level ones.
Where, and where are they?
They're across the street in Little Plains, so.
But we have ones over there too?
Well, we had to move them.
Oh, you did move them from back here?
Yeah, we were asked to move them, so.
What do we have in Southampton? What level?
Those are level threes, but those were constructed by, uh, NYSERDA, um, through, we basically gave them the parking spaces in the candy kitchen parking lot and they can start to the improvements. It's a kind of an IMAs-type cooperation deal.
But I think that people, when they're coming to Town Hall, I mean, what's the average time spent in Town Hall?
It depends on what department.
It's an hour, two hours.
Would it be, or most people coming in to file something and then they, they leave?
So the.
So they're not gonna really.
There's some people here for four hours for a Town Board meeting.
Well, for the Town Board meeting, but on a day-to-day.
The charging mindset is that people aren't coming here to get a full charge on their vehicle. They're charging at home.
Yeah.
If you're gonna plug in, what, you know, I need another five, ten miles or whatever, they're gonna do that. Um, it's also gonna help us with our fleet goals as well. So it was a way for us to, um, start to dip our toe into EV vehicles for our town fleet as well as to provide this service to the public.
Cause I'm afraid people will park here and go across the street to the eye doctor or something, you know what I mean? Because then they're gonna be there for a couple hours. But here, if you're just running in the building to file some things, you're not, I don't think you would bother to plug in.
Well, that's why you could.
Put a limit on the time.
You could put a time limit on it and to Tom's point, the software can make it so that after two hours, it turns off.
I guess what I'm trying to say, I wonder if parking is, it's such a premium here for this building, are we gonna be limiting what little parking there is now by making some of them EV spots that other people might be using that aren't even using their building?
Like we currently have EV spots out front with no chargers, so those could go away and obviously if you have an EV and you want, you could charge it. You could park it with chargers.
Two spots right there for alternative vehicles.
So that's two spots right there that are, that wouldn't be dedicated for that use anymore.
And if the world meets its goals, that it's laid out for itself, I mean, eventually, we're gonna need more of these.
Yes.
And this is a way of doing, uh, charging our vehicles at really no cost to the debt.
Yeah, it's how we fulfill our contract with NYSERDA as well.
And then we, we're gonna charge the, for the electricity during the daytime to the people.
Correct. We, we, we charge the industry standard of thirty-five cents a kilo watt hour, which is what pretty much every EV station across South County charges, so.
So you're saying you take the fleet vehicles and plug them in every night here?
Then move them in the morning. Yeah.
It's time, another dumb, Tom.
I mean, it's, it's how we, it's how we convert town staff to using EVs. It's how we basically make it work. In the future, uh, we don't have enough dedicated parking spaces to take our entire town fleet and have a charger specifically for that vehicle, nor is that vehicle gonna need to charge every night. We try, we keep the Leafs on charge right now because they only have a hundred miles. Our EVs have two hundred and sixty-something miles per inch.
Do the charging stations have one, uh, wire that plugs in or is it, is it sort of dual? It's dual.
They'll be, they'll be able to.
Oh, okay, great. Six? Yeah, six. Okay, got it. That's great. Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm good with it too. I think it's a good plan.
What would the ones in the front become then?
Uh, just more quick parking spaces.
So you can run in and file the.
And last but not least, this is a project almost as old as time.
Twenty twenty-one, I adopt, I put this resolution in, in twenty twenty, excuse me.
Not for lack of trying, it's just the state works very slowly, so this is, was originally funded, um, with assistance through a Transportation Aliment Program grant for seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars back in two thousand nineteen when we pursued it. Construction costs and everything else have gone up, so the current estimate is closer to a million dollars, which subsequently delayed it again because the estimate had to go through more scrutiny at the state. They have now approved it. These plans have been done for over a year.
Yeah, they wouldn't approve it until we demonstrated that the funding was either available or going to be available. So we were ready last summer, um, but due to our funding cycle, we couldn't prove to them that the funding was gonna be available until now.
Is it possible to ask them for the full eighty percent grant for this project? I suppose not, the way you're all looking at it.
No, so.
Okay, we're, we're, it was a twenty-eighty match that I put in in twenty twenty. And we, right, and we dedicated funds at that time. And now that we had a world pandemic, inflationary, uh, environment here, it's costing us more.
Yes.
Is the state willing? Well.
No.
Okay, we're happy that they approved it on the seven seventy-five and that was the holdup is we had to show them
that we would make up the difference to a million.
That was what they budgeted in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty.
So that's why we're bonding another two hundred thousand.
Yes, yeah. So this, uh, it's a, uh, this trail kind of varies. It starts in Red Creek Park. It's on road for about two-thirds of it, and then it dips into a newly constructed path through Good Ground Park that will connect to the parking area and restroom at Good Ground.
I thought it might have been up.
And there was a lot of elevations that you guys were dealing with.
Yeah, we rerouted within Good Ground Park because the initial, uh, path is not used here whatsoever, so.
And on the north end, it also connects to a bike route on, on Route twenty-four.
Is that what that offshoot is?
Yes, yeah.
Right, that's Route twenty-four, so.
And is this part of that larger plan to get the path from?
It is not. I mean, it could likely be incorporated. You're talking about the, um, Long Island Bike Ways project.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, it could be incorporated in that, um, but right now it's a path to get users between our two parks as well and.
Which is great.
During the summer, I traverse this path every day on my bicycle and it could definitely use a bit of upgrade and a bit of, uh, separated bike lane in this area. So it's, it's definitely a needed improvement.
So on road, there's gonna be, there's gonna be new stripe, new lining?
Yep, it would be a five-foot wide lane, so the shoulder will be widened to accommodate bicycles. Signage, striping, and then, uh, a full, I think it's a ten-foot wide asphalt path through Squirtown Park, through Good Ground Park.
That's really great.
Oh, it's Good Ground off of Squirtown, sorry.
Was that the Department of Transportation grant?
Yes. Yes, New York City.
That's fantastic.
I'm good with that.
Twenty twenty.
Great.
There are a couple of other.
Thanks for coming.
Before we kind of break here, there's a couple of other bond questions that, that we, did anyone else have? I, I had, I had one about the restricted, uh, route onto Hill Station Road.
Yes, is that for me?
Can you wait, let us all find it. What does it say?
At least the board gets up to date as to.
Where, where are we looking?
Um, we're looking on the, on the agenda. Let me find it and then I'll, uh.
Oh, yeah.
It's worth a million dollars.
It's a million dollars and I don't know if it's necessarily going to be enough and what.
What?
What the history is on this.
I don't know. Where are you looking?
That was the one you had the question about.
Is that the Shinnecott Hills Limited Access Road?
Correct. Page, page one oh one, thank you. Uh, four, five, three, eight, zero. I know that, uh, the community, members, certain members of the community really wanted this. Now, we have a process for install, uh, create, uh, upgrading roads and, uh, that's Town Law two hundred and, as I understand it, that process has not been done in this area, right?
That's correct.
So we are taking this on ourselves as a town to build out this road from kind of the Greenfield community to Hill Station.
That's correct.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a benefit for, a lot of people get hurt on Greenfields.
Right, and that's, that was, uh, that's what the, uh, the members of the community have been saying. Is a million dollars going to be enough to build out this road?
At our current.
At our current estimate, no, but I do not believe we will, we will be able to start constructing this road this year anyway. Um, so we would still need to complete the design of this road. Um, our last estimate for the roadway came in at, I think, one-point-seven, one-point-eight. Um, we never got a chance to revise that estimate because we ran out of funding uh in the spring of twenty twenty-three.
Do we currently own the road right-of-way?
We do not. I'd have to defer to the town attorney. I believe that process had been started, but has not been completed.
And procedurally, why isn't this road a road? When this subdivision was put in, why wasn't this made a road back in nineteen fifty-one, whenever?
Yeah, I don't know why it wasn't dedicated to the town back then.
Okay, so there was probably a developer that did not put a road in, and that's where the neighborhood lies since that time. Whatever, I don't, I don't know the exact year, but.
I don't think they ever foresaw thirty-nine becoming what it currently is.
Well, yeah. Well, and, well, this, other members of the community have contacted us, and they're concerned about thirty-nine going through that neighborhood.
Well, to one-way out.
In case of an emergency. If there is an emergency, it would be very useful for our first responders and to, to um to funnel traffic through that neighborhood into that road.
The previous chief in uh regard to that request.
Right, it was a, a safety concern?
Yes.
Okay.
But do the residents understand that this would have a crash gate, that this is not for their daily use, that the only time it could be used is in the case of an emergency?
No, it's, it's daily use to get out.
Daily use for an exit to head west.
Oh, I thought I was told it was just for.
No, to go in is emergency only.
May I explain that?
Yes, please.
Please.
So, so part of the, the premise of this design was that we do not create a shortcut or any type of uh shortcut from thirty-nine to get around traffic um in the morning. We expected that people were gonna try and cut through this neighborhood to then jump out on St. Andrews to continue further east. So the, what we came up with was to have a one-way out. So we would build a two-lane road, and the road going out of the neighborhood heading west to Hill Station would be open for use all the time. It would allow you to get to Hill Station, and then you could go up to Longview, and you could actually swing around onto twenty-seven, or you could go south to Montalk Highway and, and go from there. Um, the lane coming into the neighborhood heading east, we would put crash gates on either side, and the police department or the fire department or whoever would be able to open those during a time of emergency. That crash gated lane would allow a recreation opportunity for this entire neighborhood to access Montalk Highway, to access Hill Station in a way that they previously have never been able to do. So it was sort of a multi-use path that could be used as an emergency.
It's like, like a one-way street.
Too bad we don't have a drawing of it.
I have many drawings downstairs.
We do, and my final concern here is that we, there are a number of communities that have unimproved roads that we actually own, and they would love to see them paved, and this is going to be done with whole-town funds as opposed to, you know, funds from a particular area. So I just wanted to bring the, this board up to date on that, because I've received a lot of, you know, folks who would really love for us to come in and upgrade their roads at our expense, you know.
So how do you distinguish this one from this?
Exactly.
Yes.
So, you know, we, we do have this in place, and it's, you know, it's there, and it's uh down the road.
Well, it's not even, is it designed yet? Didn't you say it's not even designed?
It's been partially funded. We've paid the engineer to date, um, so we're.
I thought you said the engineering, uh, the, that you still need uh a complete design.
Yeah.
Right, we have a partial design that we've paid them for so that there's no more bills outstanding, but we still need to finish it. Essentially, the funding was pulled. I pulled funding from my budget so that I did not have an outstanding debt to an engineer who we signed a purchase order to for twenty-two thousand dollars, um, who would never want to work for the town again. So therefore, um, we can pick this project up tomorrow if the funding is made available, or we can shell it.
So uh Councilman Scivoni, the uh community um that you said is supportive of this, what, what um?
Members of the community.
So, so what kind of community outreach has, has gone on about this project, with respect to this project?
Uh, there were members of the community that approached uh the town board for this road, and um they did not want to do a town law two hundred. That's where we designate a particular area. There's a vote of the community, and they vote essentially to tax themselves to improve a road. We did this in Sagaponic, oh, excuse me, Bridgehampton.
Bridgehampton, Old Iron, we did it on a.
Couple of places.
But they paid.
Neuyac, Butcherland in Neuyac, where there was a group of homes that wanted it paved. Um, they did a town law two hundred. They voted to essentially increase their taxes to pave their road because it wasn't done by uh when, when the subdivision was put in.
Not only does it get paved, it's taken into the town highway system.
That's right, and that's the other part.
Really the, the draw.
So my, my, just my thinking right now is that I've, I've heard a lot of comments about anything with respect to County Road Thirty-nine and adding roadway. Um, now I understand that this is very specific, um, but concerns regarding if you build it, they will come. It might add some additional issues. I'm also just thinking in terms of the proximity to Shinakok Nation. We're in Shinakok Hills. Has the nation been um contacted about this at all? Have we asked about any of their thoughts about this project?
I, I don't know.
So I just want to bring up a point here because I, I was the liaison to the Tukahoe CAC when, as this conversation has been going on. The issue that they have right now coming out on Greenfield is not, it's not an, it's not an issue of their making, right? They, nobody ever envisioned thirty-nine getting the way it was. The way it currently is is there are a lot of accidents in that section of roadway, and there, they lose access to their homes. We have people that have, their children are home because they got dropped off by a bus. They can't get home from work to be with their kids. They're literally parking on Hill Station Road and walking through the woods to get home to their kids. So it, it became an issue because of the number of accidents that are occurring on thirty-nine, and they just have to have some way to access their neighborhood, and that's why I believe having two, that's why if you've heard me say, I believe that having two access points to any neighborhood that we are putting on thirty-nine has to be a priority because we're at a point of one-point-seven million dollars for a community that has one access point to thirty-nine, and they can't leave their community any other way. I just have a question about the design of it.
In the scenario that you described, they wouldn't be able to enter their community from Hill Station Road?
Yes, because the, the point of it was, if there was an accident that shuts down thirty-nine, they would open those gates to allow those people to access their neighborhood.
Right, well, the police would do it.
Anyone, anyone could then access it, but that, it would give them access to their neighborhood. That was part of the, that was part of the plan, and then, Tom, I'm guessing because, you know, you said there's crash gates and it's a two-lane road. I'm assuming there is a median or something, so you can't just drive into oncoming, you know what I mean?
Yes, we're, uh, if you've driven through the Holland Tunnel or anything like that, you've noticed there are plastic dividers between it. We're not proposing them to that extent, but that there will be some, some lane delineators along that.
So you can't just drive around the gate?
Exactly.
If I could have any preliminary drawings that you have for this, I would love to see it.
Yeah, maybe you could come to the next work.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I can present what preliminary drawings we have. There are a lot of topographical um issues on that site. It is extremely hilly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that has resulted in the increase in the initial estimate. Um, we've since been looking to, to increase some of the slopes that we're proposing on those, others' roads, which would reduce the amount of retaining walls or, or excavation that we need on that site to kind of work better with the existing geography.
And, and this is one of the reasons why I'm bringing it up is because a, a million dollars that we're, we'd be presumably committing to, may not be enough.
That's correct.
And then we would have to do perhaps another, whatever it's going to be, half a million or a million.
Yeah, we still have.
To complete a road that's only gonna be used by the neighborhood and, and not by the community.
Sure.
If it was a, a two-lane road, I probably wouldn't be questioning this as much, but.
Yeah, I bet you would guess if, if it was a two-lane road, we wouldn't be talking about it.
Because they don't want it. They don't want it to.
I think that would end up creating that shortcut.
The neighborhood doesn't want, or the people who are asking for this don't want the two-lane road.
Yeah, if it was, if it was two lanes, then I don't know that it would have gotten as far as it did.
Okay.
Christine, do we need a public hearing on this?
When you ultimately do it. Um, I don't know what has been done so far. I gotta be honest with you. I haven't been involved in this project at all, so I don't really know what's been done. Um, if there is an eminent domain proceeding, there's, there's, I believe, hearings involved with that.
Yeah.
So I'm not, but I'm not sure. I'd have to check with Jim.
Okay.
Maybe we could do a work session on it once Jim is back and.
I think that's great, yeah, that would be great.
They're gonna see the drawings at the same time.
Yep. Yeah, it's on the shelf at this point.
Because there's other neighborhoods on Long County Road Thirty, like.
Yep.
Across the street to um Inlet East by Lobster, and they have the same problem.
Oh, that's right, the whole inlet, yes.
I mean, it's just, it's just, like I said, it's a, not a problem of their name, so.
There's a paper road at the end of that creek there.
Yeah, I know, I know the portion you're talking about.
Used to be the trustees.
Yep, that's why I know.
I think it's um interesting that we're, you know, borrowing money for projects that we don't even have an idea of the total cost of the project yet.
So, the thinking behind that was, so I'm relatively new here. I started in twenty twenty-one. So a lot of these projects, we did what, um, even before Tom, I guess. They would just opine, this project's gonna cost five hundred thousand. Can I please have five hundred thousand? They'd hire an engineer, and they'd go out, and they'd get the plans, they'd go out to bid, and the project would come back, cost seven hundred, eight hundred thousand. Oh my goodness, can I have another three hundred thousand? No. Plan sits on the shelf.
Geez, yeah.
So. That's what happened.
Yeah.
So I tried to implement and I worked extensively with Dorothy, so her budget should reflect that in some of the actual projects now where we developed a five-year plan. So we sit back now, and we come up with a relatively realistic estimate, and the first thing we usually need is either to hire an architect or an engineer or a planning firm or something along those lines. That's cheap. I mean, a hundred thousand maybe, but it's, it's not a million. So I might ask, or Tom might ask in his first budget request for a hundred and fifty thousand just to hire that engineer, but the total cost of the project is gonna be our estimate, so it could be a four-million-dollar project. And we will put in the budget request, hundred and twenty this year, and then another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand the following year out to that five-year plan or three-year plan, however long it takes and however long the board wants to support a project. Um, so you'll see, yeah, little bits and pieces. Um, that was the old board's purview, um, that that was a good idea.
The capital plan is structured in a five-year increment, so you can do that. So I don't know what, do you know what the five-year expectation is on this one?
There wasn't a five-year expectation. It was, the first estimate was for a million, and that was what was.
I just feel like nothing gets done.
I'm trying to use that. Like I said, I started in twenty twenty-one, but I got a couple ready to go, um, and I, we've done, we've done a bunch, but um.
I'm not faulting you for it. It's just, it's just, you know, and then there's new projects, and then they kind of start to take priority over, like, it's like, let's finish.
I mean, perfect example is Neuyac Road, Tommy John. I mean, that's five, six million. Um, we're pursuing another cap grant for that, but we have put that in the capital program over five years, and hopefully we'll have enough funding around twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. Police Department is another one.
We've only expended the monies for engineering design, which is, which is needed for the grant applications. They want to see that.
Yeah, it should help us. Hopefully, we get that grant because it could be to a four-million-dollar grant.
How about the courts?
The courts?
Yeah.
The builder.
Do you want to speak about that now?
That's its own work session.
That's a good question.
It's a good question. There are ideas about what to do with Jackson Avenue complex. Um, so as you know, you don't know, we're currently in contract with H two M, and they are preparing a design to expand the police department. Um, that was step one, and this again is going back to old plans and intentions. But step one was to get the police department into a functional state once more. Um, after that, there's existing funding. I think it's called Jackson Avenue Master Plan. Um, what does Jackson Avenue, or what does the Jackson Avenue complex become? You intimated that you'd like a town hall west. Um, there have been extensive discussions about building and administrative building.
Skippey started that years ago.
Mm-hmm. That can house parks maintenance, justice court, um, highway, highway maintenance, um, and possibly meeting rooms, so on and so forth, but in Jackson Avenue. And there's been really pie-in-the-sky plans of moving transfer stations and making tunnels and all this other stuff. Um, I didn't think, again, new and with, you know, seeing Jay on the horizon, um, I didn't think it was a good decision to start that discussion a year ago, and then everybody comes in today, and we might have had a plan or a direction that you didn't want to follow. But we do have existing funding, or Tom has existing funding, to do a master plan for Jackson Avenue. If the board wants to pursue that at this time, it's definitely something that we can look into and start a conversation. We can put out RFPs or, you know, something along those lines. But that would include the court, because I know the courts are pretty.
And knowing that that would be a fifteen to thirty-million-dollar project, probably a ten-year capital project.
Just adds.
You know, I, just, depending on how ambitious it gets, correct?
To, to, to just contextualize uh Councilman Pell's uh concern, is it, you know, fair to say that a lot of our, you know, judges are working in essentially what could amount to sort of a trailer building?
Yeah, it's a trailer building.
Um.
Logically, sure, but they move, their wheels underneath, their wheels are still underneath, if you look close enough.
Forty years.
They still made a lot of money off that.
Yeah, so there was concerns, because we had this discussion when we hired H two M to do the police station. Um, people had an idea, should we attach the court to the police station, but there were concerns of the optics of, you know, if the court is right next to the police station, guilty, go next door.
Right, right, right.
Or vice versa.
Makes sense. Should be its own building.
So, yeah, they want their own building, um, and there are other administrative uses in the complex, um, Charlie Parks and uh.
They move them all over there.
All into one building, possibly move whoever else, you know, was in some weird satellite that might not be in the best condition.
Wait, wait a minute, it's in a weird area there now, Tom, right? PD part of the justice court, uh, before they just reached, changed everything? I don't think there's a rule against the justice court and the PD being.
Oh, there's no rule. It was the, it was the.
The optics.
The optics of it.
No, 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 there is a rule. They have to be separated.
But they can be in the same building.
No, they're supposed to be, they're supposed to be separated. Like, they wanted, I know they wanted to do like a um.
Underground tunnel.
An underground tunnel, and they, they were discouraged from doing that.
They were very outlandish designs ten years ago.
Is this something that we could do internally? Are there people here that could?
Not, not detailed drawings, but just conceptually, where the different buildings could go, what the space would look like?
So it's a, I mean, at the end of the day, it's a, but it's a blank canvas.
And Jackson Avenue is Pine Barrens.
Yeah, so we're tapped out on clearing. So we'd have to work within the existing clearing while keeping the facilities up and running.
So you have highway maintenance and trustee maintenance and parks maintenance, all dirty operations. They all have their own garages. Um, if you consolidate, consolidate that into one building, even if you built party walls because they don't like to play together, but it could still be one dirty use in one building here, instead of here, here, and here taking up a huge footprint.
That's true.
Um. I think to answer your question, with the amount of vacancies I have in my office right now, I don't think that it's something that Nick.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, no.
I think that was.
Definitely my expertise, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's.
Maybe Janice's office will kick it down there, I don't know.
But.
And then what you said about the Pine Barrens, I mean, it's not core Pine Barrens, right? It's that periphery Pine Barrens.
But we're cleared, we're tapped out on clearing.
Even so, it's, Red Creek Park is part of that same facility. Um, the transfer station is part of that same facility, so all of that counts towards our clearing. And essentially, we're at the limit of what we can clear on those three properties.
Unless we ask for a hardship exception.
I like it. Sure.
That's what I always say.
I don't, I don't know. I think that would be a question for Janice.
What's the, I mean, what are you saying about the, um, the maps? Is there like a percentage uh on each piece of property that we've already cleared that you're not allowed to go beyond?
I have maps downstairs I can show you, so. We've looked down in the past.
This could be on another work session.
Uh, this is many work sessions. It's, it's, it's always been talked about as Town Hall West. It's a, it's a facility master.
Yeah, but when we talked about, when Town Hall West was, was talked about, and they decided to redo, like, work on this building, what was the price tag back then? It was like?
Oh, it was crazy. It was probably twenty million then.
I think it was twenty-nine million back then.
Thirty million back then.
Yeah.
But that was moving the transfer station and making tunnels between buildings, and it was.
It was Roger, it was a Roger Ferris plan, if that means anything to you, um, known for outlandish.
It was to build an administrative building and those shops, it would be between twenty and thirty million. Um, we'll get a taste once we see, or if and when we see what, um, the new community center, the community center and the housing in, um.
West Hampton?
Not West Hampton, Bridgehampton, that's back at.
Oh, right.
That'll give us an idea of what.
What it costs.
Because depend, it, it's hard out here to, to really estimate well, because the farther out you go, you could, you could say, hey, it's eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars a square feet for all this space. But that might be in Babylon. That's not necessarily gonna be in Bridgehampton.
We pay a surcharge.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, how about Macy's?
For the court, yes, for highway parks.
You know, I think that. You know, I think that Macy would be big enough for the courts and the town hall.
Could be.
Did they close?
Do they have enough parking?
We have a town hall. We have a town hall.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a town hall. It could be just an office building.
That's supposed to be going up for sale.
Okay.
Some people.
Twenty twenty-four, we're going.
Well, anyway, all right, let's keep that in mind. So for this one, what are we doing? The last one, did we decide we're just going to?
Uh, the station, I think you, I was gonna come back to you with information.
Another work session with Jim's back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and with the drawings.
So are we gonna not do the bond?
We're gonna do the bond, I mean, I think, right? She said, don't pull little bond pieces
Yeah, that doesn't commit us to it.
No.
You know, we.
Don't have to borrow it.
Right.
I am, I am, I am just a little bit reserved about it, only because I, I'd like to know a little bit more about it before, before, I, I understand that there's no tie to it, but I also want to kind of gauge what the community input and engagement on this has been before I move forward.
And I would also like to have some more information about the improvements to the lobster and marina.
Here you go.
Are we gonna do that at a?
Not right now, but, yeah, I'm just saying, these are the ones.
We're ready like two hours.
I know, but, you know, when we do come back and talk about this access, limited access road, could we also look at the design and the plans for the lobster and marina?
Sure.
The new park facility, five and a half million dollars in speed. And the Shinnecock Commercial Fishing Dock improvements.
Sure.
Because I heard that Ryan had some concerns about the flooding, and if we should be putting that much money into.
Oh, we have to. It's, it's a whole industry that's dependent on that commercial dock.
Yeah, but the stuff that's being planned, I don't know. He just said something to someone who said something to me.
We're planning a parking lot in a, in a, basically a four or five concrete ramp.
Oh, it was the cell tower.
Yeah, that's, that's outside of the dock.
And it's all done to FEMA specs and.
Oh, is he concerned with it falling down still? Is that, was that the, there was a concern always about it?
He didn't say it to me directly. It came through a different.
This was Ryan.
They crumble.
Yeah.
We, we already had, we had a whole meeting with the, with the commercial fishermen, and it's, it's, the fall radius is anywhere near any of their boats.
And it kinks.
And it kinks before it, it doesn't fall, it kinks.
The cargo ramp, you might want to look at, instead of making one out of concrete, get one out of steel, because I had one, my, when I had, my place, I had one out of steel, because it could be moved around.